So, wahoo, wahoo, I'm going to fly. Welcome, and I would hope that all the members of the Board, F and B, would stop by,[11.12][11.12]introduce yourself. Could we have the real conversation?
Mr. Hurt.
Here.
Ms. Remark.
Here.
Mr. McGinnis.
Here.
Mr. Bohan.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Ms. Washington.
Here.
Mr. Hoitzman.
Here.
Mr. Davis. Ms. Benjamin. Mr. Neal.
Here.
Mr. Bahru.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, you have it for him.
Thank you. As far as the approval of minutes, the December minutes are still being transcribed, so those will be ready for us for our February meeting, 2013. New items, Ms. Washington?
Certainly. Planned commercial development rezoning, Daytona Beach Promenade, PCD, DEV 2012-113, quasi-judicial hearing.
And we hear from staff. Mr. Morozek.
Thank you. Dennis Morozek, planner with the City of Daytona Beach. The first item tonight is, again, is a request by Daytona Promenade Holdings to rezone 18.22 acres of land located at 1401 South Nova Road in Daytona Beach to the rezoned existing developed shopping center from Shopping Center BR2 to planned commercial development, PCD. I've got a location map over here, and she's going to be pulling that up for you in just a second. Again, at 1401 Nova Road, at the northeast corner of Nova and Bevel. It's just north of, I got a map over there I want to show you. Come on. There you go. Okay, you see a red line over there? That would be south Daytona, just to the south of the property. Daytona Beach is the property to the north of that red line. The future land use is retail, and the current zoning is BR2 Shopping Center. The proposed zoning, again, is planned commercial development. Again, the existing Daytona Promenade is zone BR2. It is a 1,500-square-foot shopping center, currently with approximately 2,600 square feet of restaurant space. There is a 15,000-square-foot fitness center, Planet Fitness. Currently, there are two existing outbuildings which will become outparcels if approved on the site. That would be Out parcel 1 and Out parcel 2. Out parcel 1 is an existing 3,500-square-foot retail building. Out parcel 2 is a 3,200-square-foot PNC Bank, which is located right on the corner of Nova and Bevel. Out parcel 3 is currently existing as an undeveloped pad, which had been previously approved. I've got a few pictures for you. Shows you some of the existing development, the Family Dollar and Planet Fitness there on the left-hand side. PNC Bank, you see on the top. Some retail space with some vacancies at the center, you can see over there. The PCD rezoning will allow for the creation of platted outparcels, which can be sold off to separate ownership from the center. Two additional outparcels, 4 and 5, would be created. Should point out that the fifth outparcel is one more than would normally be permitted under the current BR2 zoning, so it would be a request from the LDC standards to be able to permit that fifth outparcel to be developed. The applicant is also requesting a wave outparcel perimeter landscaping, and also to permit a reduction of up to 20 parking spaces for the purpose of saving some of the existing trees during the outparcel development. This slide will show you the location of the five proposed outparcels. Got them labeled up over there. 1 and 2 are running along Bevel Road. The ones on the bottom, the really 2, 3, 4, and 5 are all adjacent to Nova Road. Toward the back of the property, you see a red line designated there. This is the existing concrete wall or fence, which is located adjacent to the single-family residential. As a matter of fact, that is the only area where a wall is required on the property is to meet our compatibility requirements from the Land Development Code. I've got a picture of the existing fence for you. This is, again, separating the Daytona Promenade from the existing single-family development. As for permitted uses, the applicant has proposed a number of permitted uses and conditional uses. These uses are generally consistent with what's already permitted in a BR2 zoning. There are two additional uses that have been proposed. These are usually found in the business automotive zoning of the city. The proposed uses are light vehicular service and convenience retail with gasoline sales. Staff does have objections to allowing these more intense uses, and the applicant has been made aware of staff's objections. As for recommendation, with the removal of the proposed uses of the light vehicular service and the convenience retail with gasoline sales as permitted uses, staff does recommend approval to rezone the existing developed shopping center from planned commercial development, or to planned commercial development, excuse me. The item is scheduled to be heard by the City Commission for first reading on February 20th, second reading March 6, 2013, and that will be a public hearing. Affirmative vote of 6 shall be required to recommend approval to the City Commission. And that does conclude staff's presentation.
Are there any questions of staff?
I have one. On our attachment C, the support of the application, the project offers the following public benefits: addition of new landscape buffers in those areas where the wall is to be removed. We're not talking about the wall that goes across the back for the single-family, are we?
No, there was a wall that went around the entire property on the north side and the east side of the property, and that's the wall that would be removed.
The north, okay.
Where code would permit it to be removed.
Was not dead about the wall before the City Commission sometime back, and it was supposed to be repaired because...
There were some code violations on that wall before.
Was that ever done?
Yeah, there were repairs done to the wall, but after we've did a little bit more research on there, it was determined that a wall wasn't even required for that particular area, so the applicant had requested possibly removing the wall and putting in additional landscaping to substitute.
So, what's proposed here is repairing the wall that's back there now, improving it?
Well, what's proposed is taking the existing wall that's back there, separating the single-family residential, and improving that wall, making sure it's compliant with the current Land Development Code.
You might put back up the drawing that shows where they're proposing wall and where they're proposing to remove the walls. It's clear.
Okay, the wall, the wall is located just along this section over here in the back of the property, and that is adjacent to the single-family residential. The wall that was being removed is along the north border, which is adjacent to the storage facility, and along the east border over here, which is adjacent to the church property. Again, the Land Development Code doesn't require a wall for compatibility for those uses.
Is that Fairway Estates residential area back there?
Yes.
All right.
And again, the...
No, it's...
It's not Fairway Estates. It's in the subdivision that's to the north?
Of Fairway Estates.
No, it's Fairway Estates.
It's to the east.
Yeah.
Okay, now, I have a question. You just said, looking at the long, can we go back there a minute to that? Okay, looking at the long red line, and, okay, now coming up that part, yes, they're removing that because the single-family homes, if that's gone, the single-family homes that have that view, I mean, I went back there, they're going to be looking at the back of that, so they're not talking about it actually curves. They won't be removing...
Well, this can be removed. This wall over here can be removed because adjacent to it, to this property, is a church property and is not the single-family residential property.
So, even though the single-family homes will see, once that wall is removed...
Even though they can see it, because it's not adjacent to it, it's not a requirement to have it.
Isn't that wall already removed?
No.
They've been removing sections of the wall, and it may have been or may not have been removed already. And again, that was based on what the code would have permitted them to do previously, and part of satisfying some of their code violations that they had on the property.
Do they, that wall that's back there, actually, I had never seen one like that. The wall that's there needs major repairing. All the supporting struts, many of them are falling apart, and then the top bar, is that even replaceable, or would it, did you have any conversation?
Yeah, I'll have the applicant speak more directly on that. But I did speak with the property manager on this about a year ago, and it's a very unique type of a wall. It is a concrete wall, but it's concrete panels that have to be slid into place between these posts, and it does have a tendency of getting damaged, which I think is one of the reasons why they were having trouble finding replacement parts, replacement walls. They had to go down to South Florida, from what I was told, to be able to get the replacements for these walls.
Was there any conversation in just getting rid of that and doing a block and stucco wall, making something that...
Well, there was a comment initially during the review process to have the wall replaced with a concrete block wall with stucco on both sides, and the applicant has decided that they can repair this wall or clean it up and have it meet the needs of the Land Development Code.
Okay. Would the applicant like to address the board? I failed to mention in the beginning, every week you speak before the board, you need to fill out a green sheet of paper and get them to ask you. You can do that after you speak, but anyone else that wanted to, you would need to do that for the record. Thank you. If you'll state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Rick Baer. I am with American Commercial Realty. My address is 203 Via Quantera, Palm Beach Gardens, Florida. May I proceed?
Yes.
Okay. Want to follow the right procedure. Let me take, if I can, only a couple of minutes of your time and explain, okay, thank you, Mr. A little bit about who I am and the group that I am a part of, and how it ties into the history of things at the property. American Commercial Realty and our partners, they're a group that's been in existence for about a dozen years, mostly with acquisition of shopping centers, in many cases, ones in need of redevelopment. We do business in about 10 states. We have about 2.5 million square feet of commercial space under management. This particular property, which started out very well, it was constructed in 1989, began to experience, in the middle part of the last decade, extreme difficulties with the bankruptcy filing of Windexy and the subsequent closing of their store in approximately 2006, though that Windexy space was later replaced by Planet Fitness and a portion of that building and a Steven Barry's in the balance of it. However, the Steven Barry's shut not too long after it opened. The next largest tenant in the shopping center was Joann's Fabric, which closed in October of 2008, and that space has been vacant ever since. Several of the other commercial spaces have been vacant for quite a long time. The only thing of a forward basis that happened through the last decade was the construction of the National City Bank Branch, which is now PNC, in about April of 2009. In 2010, the lender on the property filed for foreclosure and took the property over in February of 2011. The group that I am a part of acquired the property at the end of June of this past year. So, one of the reasons I wanted you to understand the history, and also when talking of violations and other problems at the property, going back for a while, we hope to be entirely a part of the cure and not of the problem. Indeed, at the time we first started looking at the property in the spring and early summer of last year, in 2012, we became aware, which wasn't disclosed to us by the bank seller, that there was a list of code violations longer than your arm, not least of which included the issues on the wall. We actually stepped in before acquisition to cure those code violations that existed at that point in time, so that the property could be transferred, and then began the process of evaluating the property and deciding how best to proceed. Without overly dealing on the issue of the wall, our people met on a number of occasions with the various code people for the city, and it was determined that much of the wall should best be removed. We do not intend to remove any of the wall which is not already down. So, that I think would answer your question that you had brought up. We do intend and believe that we can successfully restore the existing wall, and by so doing, cause a minimum of disruption to the adjacent property owners, because it was amongst other elements that weren't planned so well in advance, is the way it is on the property line, there's really no access to the other side, so we've had to begin a process of how best to handle that, to take care of it. The main purpose of our standing before you today relates, as has been stated, to our proposal for conversion to the planned development. It's part of our overall plan to make this property a viable contributor to the Daytona Beach community and to be a step forward in all respects. I mean, as we acquired it, it was more than 50% vacant, and we have a number of things that I'm not prepared to be able to announce today, but that I hope we're going to be able to complete, which will result in significant new tenancy within the main part of the shopping center, and the ability to handle the outparcels in the way that was discussed by staff, I think, provides the ability to be economically viable, so that everything can be maintained properly going forward. So, I'm not going to bore you with a long presentation. If there's any questions, me or our planner is here and has all of the technical details, but I appreciate the opportunity to have been able to speak before all of you.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I have one. Okay. Would you be amenable if you have problems with repairing that wall? I mean, you would be amenable to building a new one that would come down if that can't be repaired?
We understand that it is our responsibility pursuant to code to have a properly maintained wall, so we certainly hope we won't be putting good money before bad in attempting to fix it to look good, but we realize if it doesn't work...
You'd have to be doing something, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
The light vehicular service and a convenience gas station, convenience store and gas station, you know, the future land use map for that area does not envision that at all, and in our code, retail definition, which is what you're asking for...
Correct.
Specifically excludes those. I mean, there's a reason that they're specifically excluded, and I realize that there's one, you know, on the catty corner from you, but there's not one across from you and looking long-term down the road, pardon the pun. I mean, that's really not something that is envisioned in that area at all. That brings a whole different...
Okay.
A whole different aspect to a shopping center.
And ultimately, that will be everyone's decision. If I can just explain for a moment part of our thinking. And we do not have a specific user in mind for any of these, and my personal background is in urban planning, that's what I got my master's degree in, so I am focused always on trying to do what is good for the community. I ended up on the private side of things just by happenstance a long time ago. But we are working to provide economic viability for the property, so that we don't revisit the problems that the predecessor owners had. And the zoning, as I understand, would allow for a convenience store, but doesn't allow for a gas station as a part of that. The economics of the convenience store business are such that there are virtually no convenience operations that open unless they have the ability to sell gas. We know that we will be subject, and this applies to the light vehicular service as well, to all of the conditions of landscaping, traffic, access, full review in all respects of those. So, we are hoping that we can be given a little bit of flexibility in an area that has proven to be very difficult and suffered from chronic vacancy going back for almost a decade, to have somewhat of a flexibility. And I appreciate and understand what you're saying, but that's our rationale.
Mr. Hoitzman.
No, I was going to say, then, you would not be comfortable with those being left out of our motion?
We would very much appreciate not having those excluded. We would very much appreciate the opportunity to be able to do so, knowing that with any specific proposal, we would be back before you with how we were handling it in all those ways I just mentioned.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for?
Good evening. Keith Pallan with Kinley Horn and Associates, on behalf of the applicant. My address is 445 24th Street in Vero Beach, Florida. I don't have a long presentation. I did want to address a couple of things with regard to the wall. The location of that wall within that rear buffer, it's interesting, because the wall is actually set into our property about 25 feet from the actual property line. Normally, you'd build the wall on the property line. So, over the years, of course, the back yards of the homes behind us, you know, the perception is that it's part of their yard, and that's fine, and there's a number of trees and a fair amount of vegetation on the backside of that wall. The wall was built, as Mr. Baer mentioned, with, you know, vertical supports, and the idea of going in there and trying to dig a continuous footing for a block and stucco wall would not be easy and would not be good for the trees back there. So, again, I think the hope is that they can fix it and make it look good, paint it, and get it looking decent again. With regard to the uses that staff has excluded, I would want to bring to Ms. Remark's attention, the, you know, Article 14, Section 7 of your code speaks to planned commercial developments, and Section 7.2 says that, you know, a variety of non-residential uses shall be permitted in a PCD district, including retail sales and services, business services, service stations, and light vehicular service activities as part of a shopping center. So, while I understand that they're not necessarily anticipated in the BR2 zoning, your code does acknowledge that they're appropriate in planned developments within shopping centers. So, you know, that's what we'd like to sort of bring to the table. And I would also offer that, you know, the shopping center is pretty well-established. It has pretty mature vegetation along the roadway buffers, and I think those uses obviously would be subject to the city's architectural design requirements, and I think they could be done very well and very compatibly within that shopping center if they were permitted to be there. And again, as Mr. Baer said, we don't have any specific users in mind, but we would like to hang on to that flexibility in the future if we could.
Thank you.
So, with that, I'll answer any questions or...
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone opposed to the project? Hearing done. Board, I'm ready for your comments.
Well, I would just say, while the planned commercial development, yes, includes that the retail definition specifically excludes it, and the reason I actually agree with staff on this, again, is looking at the future land use map for this, looking at what we envision in our comp plan, looking, this is an area of high visibility, it has a guaranteed scenic setback, it's a gateway to the city, and I think that the economic viability, notwithstanding part of their problems, has probably been too many people that paid too much money and got caught up in the real estate bubble, and now others are trying to pick up the pieces. I think that there's a lot of flexibility that can be done without those, especially since one of the things that I think is being added is an A3 restaurant, which I don't think is in BR2 zoning. So, they can do like a drive-up Starbucks, or Chick-fil-A, or any of those that wouldn't be allowed in their current zoning, and I think that gives them a lot of flexibility. So, actually, I agree with staff's recommendation on excluding those two particular things on that corner, on that corner, on that road. And I would make a motion to that effect, but I'm not the only one speaking. Okay. Okay, go ahead.
My only concern, something that you said, and you brought up this concrete wall, and I'm not trying to beat that horse here, but I do want to find out what, you know, this fence, this wall has been repaired over the past couple of years? There's been patchwork done to it? There has been patchwork done to the wall?
I think there's been some. These guys have not done it.
No, I'm just, I'm talking about the existing wall. There has been some patchwork done to this wall, and it hasn't worked. And it is an eyesore. It's not attractive at all, and my, here's my problem, is that I would like to have something more concrete than, well, we'll deal with the wall, we'll, you know, patch it, we'll do something, we'll dose some paint on it, but the people who live back there have to look at this deteriorating wall, and I've seen projects before where you kind of piece, fix, patch throughout the course of time to facilitate, and it just, just paint on big, still paint. And so, I would like, I don't know, I mean, a tighter, firm, a more firm response to what we're going to do with this wall, because I mean, I'm sure there's no one here in the audience who lives on that street, but I have heard people that are a little concerned about it. And so, I'm not trying to, yeah, beat this dead horse, but I would kind of like to have a better plan of action that I feel comfortable when we pass this thing, that, well, this wall is really going to be taken care of instead of just a patchwork here and here and here down the road.
Okay. It is stated in the first phase, I believe, that the wall is to be addressed. Now, maybe we need to put more teeth into the motion.
That's what, yeah, yeah, the first phase of the wall.
Before anything else is done, that's satisfying.
If I could respond to it in some respect. The property was undoubtedly, for reasons such as you mentioned, in economic distress for quite some time. The property management company that was handling it for at least the two years prior to our acquisition, of which we have no relationship to that company, had, for all practical purposes, because they're decent people who also handle some pretty nice stuff in Florida, zero budget to work with. And whenever they did anything, and we analyzed pretty carefully what they did, it was, you know, putting watercolor over something and hoping it would work for 20 minutes or whatever. That's not our approach at all. We felt like we couldn't touch that until we got through the hearing, but we are completely committed to making sure that it's very good, because it's really an element of how our shopping center is perceived, and we want this center perceived in a first-class manner. So, it needs to look good from all sides, and we've got, I believe, a very strong history through our other properties we've been involved with around the country of taking very good care of the property.
And again, I know that you guys have had control of that after this point, but I know that's, that particular wall, existing wall, has been issued, so that's why...
We certainly, I can tell you, my primary partner and I first came and looked at the property, before knowing anything about the code or anything else, we looked at the wall and said, something's wrong. And we didn't, actually, we didn't have a survey with us at the time, we didn't know whether that wall belonged to the shopping center or belonged to the case of probability or whatever, what, we said, this is terrible. And, you know, one of the reasons that we ultimately then, in compliance with the code, enforcement officials agreed that the best thing to do is remove the portions of the wall that probably never should have been built there, is because those were the high-stress areas for it. Where it's remaining, where it is an appropriate barrier to the residential areas, it does need to be properly repaired, and we have every reason to believe that it can be appropriately done, and we will take care of it.
Thank you.
Actually, to follow up, Mr. Bohan, are you dealing with code now on the wall?
Are we what?
Are you dealing with code now? Is there an open, is there an ongoing having to come into compliance with code on this wall?
I don't believe that there is, but somebody could correct me. Because they took down the north piece, that was, I think, one of the issues.
I'm not aware that there still is a code violation. There was, and I believe it's...
Because that back wall, right now, is a code violation.
It's missing pieces on top of it right now, too.
Right. Well, I was going to say, if Mr. Bohan would be comfortable, since code has to deal with this anyway, if, and code's the one that would determine compliance, state of repair, painting, getting the mildew off, and obviously, if they cannot become code compliant and pass code compliance... pass code compliance, they would have to do a new wall, anyway, so...
Well, let me point out, the issue of code versus non-code is really moot. Once it becomes a PD, what is on this PD plan will be the code. So, yeah, I think it's important that the PD spell out what the code is once this PD is approved.
Because I agree with you on the wall.
So, that would have to be included, then.
If I may offer, and I think it's reasonable, the PD has its intent better now, we're not looking to build anything on these out parcels. They all have to come in for separate site plan approval. Our first phase, as we've defined it with staff, is the new landscape that's going in on the north and the east buffers. I don't believe that that condition says anything about the wall, but that landscape has to be approved within six months, and then, I think, you know, installed shortly after that. So, I don't think we'd be opposed to, you know, amending that sort of condition to include the repair and the wall at the same time that the landscape is done, and I certainly think that's our intent. So, if adding that little bit to the condition, or at least as part of your motion, I don't think we would have a problem with that, to make sure that it does get done.
Okay.
Mr. Hurt, did you have something?
Yeah, I got, you know, I know the wall isn't dis-repaired. They, you know, they inherited the wall. They're coming in there to refurbish the shopping center, to make it more attractive, to make it more valuable. That's the only reason that they bought it, was to make money and get it up and going. And I kind of trust them to take care of the wall, because if it's a, it is, you know, an eyesore on their project, then it's a part of their project.
And I agree with, there's one thing, though, and maybe it actually already would be then in the PD, Rich. On page five of the staff report, it says, there's already language in here that says additional landscaping, and it says any necessary, I would say, unnecessary repairs to the wall will occur during the first phase of development. So, does that mean that that's part of the PD, that they have the first phase, they're going to be...
Well, what I'm wondering is, should that be taken care of first, before anything else?
Well, in their first phase, which is what they would be doing first.
And if we made the motion with the recommendation, with approval, with city's staff's recommendation, that's included?
Well, that's what I'm asking, since that language is here. Is that what it's saying would be part of this PD?
Phase one of that would be to repair the fence where the red line is, where they're proposing, and not the other.
Okay, all right, okay, got it, then. All right.
That would meet what specifications?
That would meet the current zoning requirement.
Okay, yeah, all right. Go ahead.
If I could mention something, I maybe cut people off too quick. We've had two more come up that wanted to speak on this prior to when I took it to the board. If the board doesn't mind, I would like to call them, give them a chance to speak. Is that all right?
Sure.
Wanda Lane.
And that's Wanda Lowe, L-O-W-E.
Okay.
First, let me just say that this is my first time doing anything like this, and I'm a little out of my comfort zone, but I did hear him say that he didn't think anybody was here from that area, so I felt the need to stand up here. I live on Molly Road, which is the street just in back of this wall, and I'm kind of confused, like I said, this is my first time doing this. Are we discussing this wall, or are we talking about putting a gas station right in back of my neighborhood? It's what I'm concerned about. This seems to me that we're kind of dwelling on this wall thing, which I guess these folks are gonna fix if they're buying this property and it's in disarray. However, I'm concerned about this gas station. I mean, we had a gambling thing over there for a while, and that was noisy, we didn't like it. I live, like I said, on Molly Road, which is directly behind this center, and my question is, are we talking about the gas station or this wall?
We're talking about whatever you want to talk about.
Oh, okay, well...
The city staff is recommending that removal of being able to put in a gas station.
You are recommending this?
City staff is recommending it to us, yes.
We have yet to vote on it. We haven't made the motion yet.
Okay.
But that's in the report, that city staff has requested that that be removed from a conditional use or a use in that shopping center. And also the repair of the wall.
Thank you.
And my apologies for not saying there's nobody here. We really want to say that, because by the time it turned to us, all the questions were done.
Okay. Thanks for coming up. And we have Brenda Courtney, is that right? Or Robin Courtney.
Good evening. My name is Robin Courtney, and I, too, live behind the wall on Molly Road. My concern is, whatever you put there, what are you gonna do about the traffic pattern? That corner is already a death trap waiting to happen. And if you put anything in there at all that draws a crowd, it's gonna be a catastrophe. That's my concern.
Okay, thank you. Now, we'll go back to the board. Are there any other comments from board members concerning this? I'll make a motion.
Kathy was gonna...
Kathy, excuse me.
That was one of my concerns, the traffic, because if you come from the west on Bevel, making a left into that area is really, really tricky. And I think that whatever goes in that area, that the traffic pattern really needs to be defined, because it is a death trap. I travel it quite frequently, and sometimes I make the wrong turn, and I live in that area.
I would just like to say before a motion is made, that I'm glad to see something trying to be done with that area. It has suffered for a long time, and it has great potential, I think. I do agree with staff as far as the station is concerned, but I wish you the best of luck in something in there, too. And I do want to see the wall addressed, and... Yes, John?
Mr. Chairman, I have one, I'm torn about the gas station and the convenience store. I'm torn because it doesn't fit in with the future land use, although exceptions are permitted. But I'm also torn because one of the other exceptions that we're permitting is a reduction in the landscaping around any of the out parcels, which means that even if we, a convenience store, gas station, or vehicular service goes in there, we're not going to have the usual barriers that we usually ask for around that type, those types of operations. That's, so I'm torn. I would like to see, I would like to see something positive for this center, but I'm just torn with that particular use, and I agree with Ms. Remar, there are a number of other uses not in this, so I agree with the staff on this.
Most definitely.
I might add that, in the report also, is they've asked for the elimination of 20 parking spaces to save specimen trees in that area. Being somewhat familiar with the area, there's vegetation around there, so I hear what you're saying, I know what you're saying, yet I think when they go in looking for the out parcels, that may make some difference there, I don't know.
You know, the one other comment I did just want to add, and I didn't get Wanda's last name, but when she got up, it made me think about it, too, about gas station or convenience stores, you're pretty much talking a 24/7 operation when you do something like that as well, you know, right into a neighborhood neighboring, and that would change the whole tenor of this shopping center, and could definitely and would affect that neighborhood. So, that's another reason I'm really not in favor of that. So, okay.
Make a motion, we approve rezoning planned commercial development, DEV 2012-113, Daytona Promenade, PCD, with staff's recommendation.
Second.
Second. I want to be sure what that says, that you're saying that they will not be allowed to have the vehicular service?
Or the convenience retail with gas sales, either one of those two.
Even though there's no gas stations from US-1 to Williamson on the right-hand side.
On the right-hand side.
Every time when I'm going home, I'm thinking, I want to pull in there.
And the wall to be addressed in the first phase.
Well, that's all right, that's on page five.
That's on page five. That's their recommendation that it be addressed.
Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Everyone opposed? Thank you.
Item number five, preliminary plat, Daytona Promenade, DEV 2012-114, quasi-judicial hearing.
Mr. Baer from staff.
Thank you, Dennis Marzic, again, with the City of Daytona Beach. Again, this is item number five. It is a request to approve a preliminary plat for the 18.22 acres of land located at 1401 South Nova Road in Daytona Beach to create five out parcels within the existing Daytona Promenade Shopping Center. Again, just discussing this, the location of the preliminary plat, again, and the purpose of the subdivision and plating requirements from the Land Development Code, to ensure that adequate infrastructure is installed and available for development, to permit development in an orderly physical pattern, and prevent undue burdens or costs to the public. Again, this application is for the preliminary plat. The preliminary plat is required to go to the City Commission for approval. There will be a final plat that'll be submitted to the city. A final plat only requires a City Commission approval, and the preliminary plat, by the time it does get to the City Commission, will be included into the planned commercial development rezoning agreement in that document. Real quickly, the preliminary plat, this is available in your staff report. It shows six lots, the one lot being the main shopping center, and then the five out parcel lots. And as far as the recommendation, staff does recommend approval of the preliminary plat request. The item is tentatively scheduled to be heard by the City Commission at the March 6, 2013 City Commission meeting. A majority of vote of the planning board members present and voting are required to recommend approval to the City Commission, and that concludes staff's recommendation.
Any questions, staff? I don't want to say anything at all. I don't see any need. Board?
Motion to approve preliminary plat, Daytona Promenade, DEV 2012-114.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none. Item number six.
Item number six, comprehensive sign plan, Bethune-Cookman University, Main Campus, DEV 2012-077. Aye.
Yeah, we saw.
Oh, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Reed Burger.
Good evening, Mr. Moore, and the rest of the planning board.
Are you doing Bethune-Cookman?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
We do have one member of the board that is employed there, so she will not be able to vote. She does wish to speak, but she can't vote. All right.
Okay. Again, good evening. I am Reed Burger, redevelopment director, the City of Daytona Beach. I am discussing tonight, the first case is a request that came to the Midtown Redevelopment Board by Rob Merrill from Cobb Coal on behalf of Bethune-Cookman University to approve a resolution adopting a comprehensive sign plan. And there's a map that's attached here, and that is a location for all of the different types of signs that are being proposed on the campus. So, as you go through all of the documents that were attached there, it explains which each of those are identification signs, and I think the one that everyone's probably most interested in is the Electronic Message Center, EMC. The comprehensive sign plan is permitted for colleges consisting of at least 35 contiguous acres, and Bethune-Cookman University does exceed that. They're approximately about 80 acres plus. So, that is all contiguous property, and we're okay there. And also, one of the things is that in that package, it identifies all of those existing proposed signs in terms of what they look like, and you have all those exhibits. The one that I want to bring your attention to is the EMC sign. There is a provision in there for eight feet maximum height, in this case, you're requesting 22 feet. The reason for that is because it is the height of the existing sign that's out there, and where you see the, that blinking, that's not the electronic sign going off. That is a little gimmick that Dennis threw in there, and that, what that does is just show you where the electronic sign would be inserted into the existing structure. So, it's there already, it's just a matter of placing that in that location. So, it'll be one of those. The recommendation is for staff supporting the Midtown Board's recommendation for approval of the comprehensive sign plan for Bethune-Cookman University. This application request is tentatively scheduled for, to be heard by the City Commission for review and action on March 7, 2013. Majority vote of the planning board members present and voting is required for recommendation of approval to the City Commission, and if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
Are there any questions, just to have? Hearing none.
Oh, I had, on that map...
Yes.
Are the two, I see where the EMC sign is in front of the Performing Arts Center, but are those other two blue Ps that are there, those are proposed, or are they already? Because one of those, isn't that the new athletic building right across the street? Is there already a sign, or are they proposing a different sign, or?
The Athletic Center does have a sign on the wall...
On the building, so they're proposing...
On the building itself.
These are ground signs that are being proposed.
These are ground signs, those monument signs you see, and so...
Okay.
I think what they want is they want to have that gateway look coming through.
Right, right.
Yeah, very fine. Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a couple things. When you indicated, how tall was that one time you talked about?
22 feet. Yes, sir.
And actually, regulations are eight?
Eight feet for this particular requirement, yes, sir.
And actually, then I noticed also on the three signs that you showed across here, actually, that first one's very close to a pole sign that we don't like.
Which page are you looking at?
Well, that, oh, yeah, page 12, I'm sorry. I didn't think I had a page number.
Page 12.
12, yeah, please. And, you know, I know that the other two are just as tall, but they sound more attractive than the pole signs, the pole sign on the left.
Are they, but aren't they talking about covering that? That's how I understood what I was looking at.
Optional is why I...
I didn't know if they wanted to have that as one of their choices, that's what I was trying to point out.
Okay, but is the option...
If that is a choice, I would probably not have that choice.
I think that's what they were asking, is it not?
Would it be helpful to have the applicant speak?
One or the other.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Moore, can we hear from...
I thought the option was just brick or pylon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, Rob Merrill with Cobb Coal, 150 Magnolia here in Daytona Beach. Should I start with the question, I guess? Bob, the question is about these signs right here? The one to the left is an existing sign, and then the ones to the right would be the proposed, so to the extent it's a pole sign, it's a, this is a, I mean, that's an interpretation, it's kind of a monument sign, it has different dimensions, but the answer is, this is there, this is the way we're proposing to make it better.
Okay, so you're not gonna be using something like that that's shown on the left?
No, it's shown for purposes of showing what's there existing. That's the reason. As I said, I'm here representing the great Bethune-Cookman University, and as usual, Reed kind of stole all my fire and pretty much gave you a complete outline of what we're asking for tonight, and again, I would echo his comments, his recommendation, and the Midtown Board's recommendation to you. I do want to point out one small correction on the package that I noticed this afternoon on page 18, and I'm gonna pass these out to you. It's really just changing one number.
We have it.
Oh, you have it?
We have it.
We did mention, I want to make sure the record is clear, there was a multiplication, and believe it or not, I actually found that difference in this table on page 18. The table is really a summary table, so the substance of all of these numbers is contained within the plan itself, so it was just a mathematical change, so we wanted to clarify that for the record tonight, and that's what'll go to the City Com- and that's what will go to the City Commission. And I think Reed also did mention, there was a place where this table was moved into the staff report, and a column was missing in the staff report too. So in case any of you all read that and caught it, I wanted to clarify that for you. But otherwise, I'll mention to you that those of you who've been on the board for a while have seen a few of these come across in the past couple of years, most recently for Embry-Riddle, for the hospital previously, and for the Speedway originally. And these are really a way of looking comprehensively at signage for these larger institutions, where they had been running into some issues with the way that the code dealt with signage. And so one way to do it was to do it on a site-by-site basis for these larger institutions. So the City Commission and you all, based on your recommendation, decided to change the code to allow this opportunity to these types of institutions. And so this is the fourth example of that that's been before you. So hopefully, you're familiar with the format of it, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
I have one question, since you're up here, Mr. Merrill.
Yes, ma'am.
Just to make sure, even though you said to the Midtown Board in the minutes that the sign's changing every 30 seconds, the EMC, the central sign plan sticks with the standard of every 60 seconds, so that would also be another small little?
Is it 60 or 30?
It's 60 in the sign plan we have, so I'm just going to say maybe that was like the multiplication number?
We intended for it to be compliant with the new Electronic Message Center sign code standard.
So 60 is.
All right.
So which it has to be, I don't think.
Okay. No, it could be something you're asking for a waiver for like 22 feet. Okay.
Did I say that, really?
You would point it out to us.
It's in black and white. We have it right here.
I certainly would have pointed it out to you. Either that or they typed the minutes wrong. It could be one or the other. But no, the answer is code compliant as to the frequency. The only variation was as it relates to that height. But again, Bob, that's an existing sign, and I think you might remember, as we came through with even the code amendment, I pointed out that Bethune-Cookman was interested in being able to utilize that. In a large part, it's because of the cost of changing those Trivision, sorry, sign guys, but the cost of changing the Trivision panels is a lot, because they put new vinyl on them every time they have to change the message. So electronics makes a lot of sense.
Any other questions?
Mine was not a question, it was just a comment. I am happy to see it. I've watched this for, what has it been, over two years? I've watched others be approved, and Bethune-Cookman was placed on the back burner, and I understood there would be an issue with the height, because the monument was already there. But I'm happy to see it at this point, and I dearly hope that everyone votes their conscience for the positive, since I can't tell you what to do.
So we know where you stand.
And I was not paid to say it.
If there are no more questions, the applicant, we did have one speaker, Michelle Cameron.
I don't want to speak.
All right. Board, your comments?
Make the motion, we approve comprehensive sign plan Bethune-Cookman University Main Campus DEV 2012-077.
Second.
We have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
You had a lot of seconds.
All right.
All kinds of seconds.
That's right, I will.
You got your choice.
Item number seven, planned commercial development rezoning Daytona Beach Convention Hotel and Condominiums, PCD DEV 2012-110 quasi judicial hearing.
Aye, may we hear from staff? Mr. Berger?
Good evening again. I, I'll make sure we've got everything up here. Good. This is a request to rezone 4.6 roughly acres of land from T1 tourist accommodations to PCD planned commercial development, 442 North Atlantic Avenue and 500 North Atlantic Avenue, generally located on both south and north side of Oak Ridge Boulevard, east of Atlantic Avenue, for the purpose of building a 27-story, 502-room, four-star hotel and a 29-story, 105-room condominium and parking structure on the north side. And, try this again. That is a picture of the proposed hotel project, the hotel on your right, the condominium tower on your left, that being on the north side of Oak Ridge. And if you are looking at this view, it's roughly from Oak Ridge towards the east, towards the ocean. And the thing that I think is really important here is a lot of the visuals you're going to see. Most of those aren't going to be something that staff is presenting, but the applicant has a number of graphics that I think they're going to want to show later on, and I think it will help everybody get the big picture. The background for you is that the Main Street Board last September reviewed the conceptual plan, and they did provide initial comments, questions, there were suggestions made, there's no vote. But it was to give both the applicant and the staff some information about any concerns that anyone had about the project, to get that out on the table, and let everyone do their work, and then come back to present a site plan for a formal review, which is what happened on January 9, two weeks ago. The Main Street Board reviewed the site plan and voted 7-0 to recommend, to the planning board, to recommend the approval of the rezoning request to the City Commission with a request to address two issues. I'll get to those two issues in just a minute. First of all, just to point out a couple of the highlights, besides the height of the building, and you have a 15,000 square foot meeting space area in this to help complement the convention center. And it's assuming that there will be a need for people who are coming here for conventions. This is not just a resort hotel. The parking spaces that are in this building are 66 surface parking spaces that is on the first floor grade, and you have a subfloor area as well that's included in those 66 surface, 66 parking spaces. You have, this is the interesting part, 616 robotic parking spaces. And I know there's some questions about numbers of parking spaces, and we'll get to that in just a minute. The A1A streetscape extended along the facade and between A1, not only A1A, but also Oak Ridge, is going to take the same streetscape we have now, and you'll see there's some driveways that were in the concrete driveways that are in that current streetscape, but they're looking to extend that back further into the project. In other words, from the right-of-way onto the private land through arcades and just setting the buildings back further. And we'll see that in a minute as well. The project benefits are clearly what we've mentioned before, that is the convention center hotel that we need. We need new quality rooms in and around the E-zone, and this takes us a significant step in that direction. This is also a significant economic impact, not only for the city, but also the county, and because part of this is the hotel part in the community redevelopment area, that is important as well to receive some tax increment financing for other projects that we can achieve in the Main Street area. The streetfront retail hardscape landscaping that's on Oak Ridge, it's on Atlantic Avenue, that is an area that there's going to be some work done immediately in front of the project. There was, I think, in our Main Street meeting, some graphics and some ideas that were presented that would actually go from the project all the way down to the bridge on Oak Ridge. So that you were really going to look at what it might be in the future. And there was some confusion, was that going to be something that the developer's going to do, or what's going to happen there? And right now, that is something that would be for the future decision of the city, the CRA, if it wanted to proceed to implement some of those improvements along Oak Ridge. But it's not part of the proposed benefits at this time. So just wanted to clear that up. The city water sewer and infrastructure upgrades would be a project benefit in the area, and that it would serve more than just the hotel and the condominium project. There's a first-class design and architecture as mentioned, and there's more of these that are listed in the letter of waivers and benefits that's been provided in your packet. And so I won't go over the rest of these, but clearly, it discusses a lot of the economic benefits and jobs and revenues to our area. Now I want to get back to what the Main Street Board brought up as the issue, is a part of its motion, you can read in the minutes. It's their recommendation that they would like for this board to review the need for a traffic management plan that addresses internal traffic circulation, including vehicle stacking and parking on Oak Ridge Boulevard, east of Atlantic Avenue, and ingress and egress from the Sea Dunes Motel parking lot. That's part one of two of the first issue. The second is to review the applicant's request to reduce the number of parking spaces required by the Land Development Code, because there's a waiver requested of 100 parking spaces from 782 to 682 spaces. And then there's also the review, this is the second part of the motion, was to review the request to reduce the required setback on the south side of the Sea Dunes Motel. And this is with the understanding that the applicant would be meeting with the owners of the motel to discuss that particular issue, preferably prior to this meeting, see if something could be worked out. So that's where most of the discussion focused at the Main Street Board meeting, and was encapsulated in that motion. Now, in terms of the lay of the land, just want to point out that the north right-of-way line of Oak Ridge Avenue is the north line of the Main Street redevelopment area. So it's split into two pieces here, and affects how revenue would go into the redevelopment area. The, this aerial is a 2009 aerial. As you can see, in that project area, there are three hotels that occupied the site where this project is proposed. And it is a, I think, a telling photo of that area in terms of where the Sea Dunes is surrounded by these other hotels. Certainly, these are only of your three-story type variety, not the taller buildings you see now. The zoning map that's provided here shows that this is all in the T1 tourist accommodations district, so that clearly is all one area in terms of zoning. And then you also have the future land use map that does provide a picture of a division again, on the north side, you've got the T1, or the tourist accommodations, future land use. And then you also have the high-intensity mixed use on the south side. That's that red color, that's on the south side of Oak Ridge Boulevard. So that gives you the basic information. I wanted to give you a few pictures, refresh your memory, if you weren't at the site today recently, I thought this tells a lot, what is out there. This is your view coming up Oak Ridge to the site, and that covers from left to right most of the site. You can see kind of on the edge, on the right side of this picture, the Regency, which is the southernmost section of the property, north to where the plaza is, which you can't see in this particular picture, but it's right off to the left of the picture. This picture is the north condo tower site. This is giving you a little closer view of it from A1A. This is the south hotel tower site, looking north on A1A, and so you can see the plaza in the distance and the Sea Dune as well. And you can see some of the beautiful landscape in that the Regency has out in front of their property as well. The Atlantic Avenue areas, it's rendered, I've seen something similar to that previously. How would I do, stick another photograph in there? Okay, yeah, I just got ahead of myself. This is, if you're coming over the bridge, this is a picture I think you might see a little bit later, but there's actually a scaled drawing of what it would look like, those two towers, compared to the other buildings that are there. You can see on the right side, you have the Ocean Walk buildings that are, give you a sense of scale in the skyline. But again, this is taken as you're on the top of the Oak Ridge Bridge, coming over the river. The, again, that picture, I think you've seen, this is from the beachside, and you can see the terracing for the outdoor areas that serve both the hotel and the condominiums. And you also have in here a site plan concept that we show the towers, the darkest area is the taller towers. You can see it's not one long mass that's going north-south across here. The attempt is to try to bring as many floors up rather than across or out. And if you look towards the center, there's an 11-story portion that extends from Oak Ridge over to the hotel tower to the south. And there's a crosswalk of a few stories that link both the north and the south side. And keeping in mind that the hotel itself does have rooms on the north side, so there is a band of rooms that is on those lower floors in the first 11 stories that wrap around in the tower section. And then you have above that the condominiums on the north side. This again is just a larger picture showing the buildings back in the 2009 period. And a couple of other pictures I thought were maybe helpful in the discussion you may be having tonight is the Sea Dune Motel. These are from Google Earth, and are recent pictures from this past year, showing you a couple different views, this one being from Oak Ridge looking south, the Regency behind it. This one is looking at the corner from A1A towards Oak Ridge, as if you were going to turn into the hotel itself at this point, so you get a sense of some scale there. This is the Sea Dune. This is the Sea Dune, as it looks, almost face-on, it gives you a kind of an idea of what is to their south, where that setback request has been provided in a letter from Mr. Morris to everybody, I presume. And then you have, in this picture, I think about the end here, this is one that I think represents how not to build your hotel project next to the A1A. This is right up against it, there's no, there's nothing there to look at as you walk along. If you've ever taken a walk, and I've done it several times, that's not where tourists should be walking by. But it is there, it's in the past, we'd like to change what the future's going to be along here, and I think that this project starts to get us in that direction. The item is tentatively scheduled to be heard by the City Commission for the first reading on March 6, and for the second reading on March 20, for a public hearing. An affirmative vote of six shall be required to recommend approval to the City Commission. Lastly, the recommendation is that staff finds that the site plan and the request to rezone the approximately 4.6 acres of land located at 500 North Atlantic Avenue, and is from T1 tourist accommodations to PCD planned commercial development, establishing the Daytona Beach Convention Hotel and Condominiums is in compliance with the Comprehensive Plan and PD agreement, if approved by the City Commission with the proposed waivers. If there are any questions, I would really appreciate if there was any way we could, because there's so much information that the applicant, I think, will present to you. And this happened at our Main Street Board meeting. If you would be okay with me taking the questions after they make their presentation, and then I'd be glad to come back up here, or somewhere in between, and help answer any questions you have.
I think that would be preferable.
Okay.
Maybe hear from the applicant, Mr. Merle.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, Board members. Thanks for having me tonight, with Cobb Cole, 150 Magnolia, here tonight on behalf of the applicant Proto Group. I'm going to take just a couple of minutes to start, if I could, introduce some of the folks that are here with me tonight, because some of them come from a long way. I'll start with Alexei Lysich and Simeon Kramer, both of whom are principals with Proto Group. Alexei lives in Russia primarily, and has a home in Palm Coast. And Simeon lives in New York City for 20-plus years, but also originally from Russia. And I also have with me Greg Portman and Gene Montezinos from PBFS Architects, who are architects here to answer any questions you have about their good work that we're going to show you tonight. And Paul Monberger, here from Zeb Cohen Associates. And I think Paul's going to be a jack-of-all-trades for civil engineering, landscape engineering. Oh, and Randy Hodeck is also here from Zeb Cohen Associates. And then I have Dan DiAntonio from Laster Transportation Group. Dan's actually going to be giving you a short presentation tonight as well. And I think that's all we have tonight, but that's a pretty good group, and we're here to answer any questions you have. I'm also here to show you some, I think you're probably going to be happy to hear that I'm here to show you some visuals, and they say a picture speaks a thousand words, so hopefully I can keep it to about 900 for me. I'm going to pass out just quickly for you. I know we've, I've been before you, you know, many, many times with projects that I'm excited about, that I think you should be excited about, and sometimes they haven't come to fruition, and I'm sensitive to that. And I think it's important for you to know, you know me, you see me all the time, I think it's important for you to know who you're dealing with, who's bringing the project to you. And so I've introduced you to these gentlemen, but I wanted you to see a little bit about them and their company. They're relatively new to the United States of America, which I think is an interesting thing that you probably have not seen much of, I haven't. But you'll see in the first page of the brochure that I gave you, some nice pictures of the family. This is a family business, for the most part. And you'll see some of the things over there on the first page that they do, some of the hotels that they have. And they're also in the grocery business in Russia. They are not hotel builders and flippers, or even entitlers and flippers. They are operators, they're developers, they know the business, and they know it from A to Z, not just the first few steps, and then try to find somebody to come in and step in for them. You'll see as we look through this, evidence of that with some of the hotels that they own. One of which I have highlighted on the list there of holdings on the first page, it's the third one, the Holiday Inn in St. Petersburg, is actually a 557-room convention hotel, so it's very similar to what we're talking about here tonight, which I think is important. If you flip the page there, you'll see the first hotel that's highlighted there is a historic hotel in St. Petersburg, as you can see there in the verbiage, I'm not going to go through this in detail, but actually has a historic facade that is protected as part of the, you know, the state historic places. The next one on the next page is the one I spoke of, the Convention Hotel. In contrast, this is a brand-new hotel, relatively new hotel, that was constructed for the purposes of convention business. It has a lot of the same features that you see in the hotel that we're bringing to you tonight, so these folks not only have developed this before, they're operating one, very similar to what we're talking about right now. As you go through the rest of the brochure, you'll see that some of these are, they call flagged hotels, and some of them aren't. So they've done both. They've got some that are their brand name, and some that they've either been in a partnership through a, what we call a flag opportunity through Staybridge and Holiday Inn. But in this case, we, at this point in time, intend to do our own brand here in Daytona Beach. The final page that you see on the brochure shows the Days Inn in Palm Coast, which was their first step into the United States. They wanted to start a little smaller than the one that you see before you tonight, but they have been successful there, and are ready for the next step. With that, I'm going to show you two videos, actually, three videos, and I hope we have the order of them the way I was hoping. So the first one will be really a video that, and before you start it, let me just say something about it. The architects have done a fabulous job of designing this project in great detail. When they do that, this day and age, through the computers, they're actually able to show you a three-dimensional, I call it a video, rendering of the project, which you're going to hopefully be impressed by, because it gives you the opportunity to see what it's really going to look like in real life, once it's built. So let's show that, and I'm going to sort of narrate a little bit as we go through it, but I wanted you to know that it is a two-scale, it's not a cartoon rendering. This is a scaled, three-dimensional exhibit that's intended to show you exactly what it really is going to look like. So with that, let's roll it. No music, huh? Okay, we did have some music from Yanni or someone in the background, I think someone axed it. This is going to, so you're going to get my narration, this is from the beachside. I'm going to get in more detail in a minute, these are sort of highlights. That's the amenity deck on the condominium on the 10th floor, which I'm going to point out to you in a minute. I guess that's a sunset. Okay, so that's sort of an introduction, and then a little commercial for the architect. Tried to get Cobb Cole on there. So here we go, we're going to start from the beach and sort of do a fly-around, if you will, of the project. So we're approaching from the south, along the beach. And I'm going to, actually, we're able to take slices of this video, if you will, and show them in slides, which I'm going to show you still. So I'm going to be able to describe a lot of the project to you, so I'm just going to sort of let you get a flavor for it, three-dimensionally, and then we'll do that piece by piece. Now we're swinging around to the north side of the project, this is the condominium tower, there's the amenity. Uh-oh. Here's the amenity area I was referring to, on top of the 10th floor of the tower. All condominium, all hotel. And as you can see, there's a lot of glass, there were some comments made by various members along the way, the redevelopment board, and I think others, about the reflectivity of the glass. We actually brought you a piece of glass to look at and handle tonight, if you like, to understand the type of glass that we're using. Now we're flying down into what is now the Oak Ridge Beach Approach. And you're looking at the entrance to the hotel lobby. This is a placeholder, a piece of art, so don't get hung up on that if that's not your personal taste. Again, coming down, looking at, on your right, the entrance to the hotel, and going down the Oak Ridge Approach, and onto the beach. Up the amenity deck for the hotel, which you'll see a better picture of in a few minutes, multiple layers, levels. Looking at convention space, restaurant, lobby area. I think our beach is actually wider than that, at least at low tide. And we tried to represent the adjoining, this would be the regency, and that would be the plaza, just in block form, so you can sort of see the structures in place. That kind of gives you the, I was going to say the 30,000-foot view, but I guess it was a little bit lower than that, but a sort of a panned-back view of what it looks like in three dimensions. And then what I asked Zeb Cohen's office to do is get us down to the street level, because when we showed this video at the redevelopment board originally with the concept planner view, they wanted to see closer to the street, and I understood that, in large part, because a lot of the things that we're bringing have to do with activating the street level, both pedestrian activity and vehicular activity, which we're going to talk about in a few minutes. But if we can go ahead and show the video at the street level. And what we're going to do is, before you start it, Paul, we're going to start at the bridge, and you heard Reed mention something about the video as we showed this to the, I'm sorry to put my back to you guys over here, but I got to point one way or the other, to the redevelopment board. And as we start and go down Oak Ridge from the bridge towards the project, there are some things along Oak Ridge that we wanted to show that were ambitious on our part, and others that are actually, we hope, going to happen as part of the constructionist project. I'm going to talk about those as we go down the road. When we get to A1A, everything that you see along A1A and along Oak Ridge, between A1A and the ocean, is going to be constructed as part of this project, so I'm going to talk about some of those details. Again, don't get too hung up as we look at the video, because I'm going to show you some still pictures, that I'm going to be able to highlight some of those details. So let's go ahead and roll down Oak Ridge. Again, moving from the bridge, towards crossing Halifax, first then Peninsula. Is that right, am I reversing? So we're approaching Halifax right now. So what you're seeing, some of the, primarily the hardscape and landscape improvements are the ambitious part that Reed was talking about, and that I referred to. The way that you see the travel lanes reconfigured to include a narrower lane and an additional lane of parallel parking, much like you see on Seabreeze Boulevard, hoping to make this a calmer sort of entrance to the beachside, like Seabreeze Boulevard provides the opposite effect as the exit. The hope is that we're going to pick up some off-beach parking, public parking, and make this a more presentable entrance to the beachside. And as you can see, you know, we've superimposed to scale our project in the background, so you can get a feel for what it's like as you actually move down the road. And again, you'll see the parallel parking is on the right side of the street, and we continue with the three, these are all three traffic lanes. The lanes that are there now are unusually wide, it's kind of a freeway from the river to the beach. And I don't, you know, obviously, everything that we do here is going to have to be approved by DOT, it's their road, but we're pretty confident that they're going to agree with our thoughts about that. And you'll see some familiar structures that we tried to superimpose in here, like the SunTrust Bank that we just passed to give you a realistic flavor for it. And now approaching A1A and the project, you sort of see that this whole Boulevard is a grand entrance to this project. And then down, what is now the Oak Ridge Beach Approach. And we have a traffic circle that, on the right, has the entrance to the hotel, on the left, the entrance to the condominium project. I guess we actually changed the place marker for the art on this one. And as you come around, you're going to see the beach in the background, doesn't show any restriction on the access to it, but this is a place where the beach is closed to vehicles. And so there will be some sort of a structure there that keeps the vehicles off the beach and allows it to be open to pedestrians. We are working with the county as to what form that'll take, it may be recessed bollards, we haven't figured out exactly, but it's not going to be the old rusty gates that And again, back down Oak Ridge. You can see that the structure that comes across is really a passageway, a bridge, if you will, from one side of the project to the other. All of the enhancements that you see along Oak Ridge, including all the hardscape, all the pavers, all the landscaping, will be constructed as part of the project. Now you're starting to get a feel for the street level as you go north, in what we call the arcade aspect of the project. You've got shelter from the sun and the rain along here, which was quite obviously missing from the picture that Reed shows you of the other projects constructed in the area. But giving you some opportunity for pedestrian movement up and down the A1A, which we know happens now, and making more room for it, as well as opportunities for outdoor dining, place to have a cup of coffee, et cetera. Now moving to the south, along the Sea Dunes property, which Reed showed you pictures of, and along the southerly boundary of our property on the A1A frontage. Again, retail along the frontage, intended to be an urban edge that creates an activated area for pedestrians, which is something that, we have the pedestrians when you see the events happening down there, they're moving up and down the, up and down A1A, but they typically don't have much to do along the way when they're going from one place to another, and we're hoping that changes with this project, and hopefully others that will come behind it. Okay, so Paul, you have a few stills, and I'm sorry to take so long, but I tell you, this has been a long time coming, and I think there's a lot of pictures that'll help you to get a good feel for the project. So with that, what I would like to do is take a few minutes and point out some of the features to you in still photos, so that we can, you've seen this picture at the redevelopment board, the conceptual review, I've forgotten who said it, but someone said, "Well, we're afraid that this is so massive, it's going to look like a wall when you come across the bridge." And I said, "I don't know, I don't think so." So I said, "Why don't we go take a picture on the bridge, and we'll ask the architects to computer image, to scale the project into the picture, and that's what you see." So I think in terms of the, whether it's a wall or whether it's not, if you compare it to the Hilton and the Ocean Walk, certainly, it's got a lot more view in terms of the horizon around it. So although it's taller, it does have the view as you come across the bridge. You use your own judgment as to how you think you feel about that coming across the bridge, but I think it certainly adds to the skyline. Next one, Paul? Okay, you've seen a few of these pictures that were really slices from the video, but I wanted to point some of the things out to you. Reed mentioned a couple of things, but I want to make sure you understood all the different building blocks and components of the project. As you're looking at it from A1A, as we talked about, and you saw in a close-up view, the area along the front is retail, and the retail actually wraps around in this arcade area that we kind of came down and drove around in the video, into Oak Ridge Boulevard. There you go, in this area here. As well as all the hardscaping and landscaping, and the colored pavers and things that you saw, really kind of ties A1A into Oak Ridge and down to the beach. This tower, as Reed mentioned, is all hotel, and this is the condominium. The parking area that's within the condominium is wrapped, and it has hotel rooms, and you're going to, I'm going to show you a picture of it in a minute on the back, so if you can go to the next one for me, Paul? Looking from the beach, this portion of the parking structure that faces the beach is lined with hotel rooms. It's one of the things that, when we talked about, you know, how we wanted hotels be built on the beach, we didn't want to see, like we do with some of these other projects, parking garages. We don't like looking at them. We don't like looking at them, and that's understandable. So this portion of the parking garage is lined with hotel rooms in the back. This area is also hotel rooms in the area we call the mid-rise tower, and I'm gonna go in closer and tell you a few more things about it, but let's go ahead and go to the next one, Paul? Little fuzzy, not sure why, but this gives you a closer-up picture of the amenity deck, the pool deck area for the hotel. There's actually also an amenity deck up here for the hotel users, for the hotel guests. And this is the lobby area. Over here is, and I think we're getting another picture of it in a minute, but this is the convention space in the back, and this is a restaurant that fronts on the pool deck. Okay? I think you must've missed some. Can you click back a couple to see if you missed something, Paul? Okay, you're fine. Keep going. What we're gonna do here is zero in, again, a little fuzzier than I hoped, but I've given you guys paper versions of all this, right? Sorry. Somebody's a little behind me over here. Let me pass these out, 'cause I really don't wanna have their work slighted by looking at this fuzzy picture of it. So I'm gonna give you guys paper copies of this, and we're gonna start on page five While you're passing those out, if you could just flip to the fifth page, their number on the bottom right-hand side. This is a view looking west along the Oak Ridge Beach Approach. We kind of flew around this in the video, but I wanted to point out a couple of things to you here. Kind of get a good view of the bridge, if you will, between the two towers. And this would be the area where the lobby and the entrance to the hotel would be. So looking on your page there on the left-hand side, where you see the glass towards the bottom, to the right of the landscaped area, that gives you a little better view of, you can see the entrance to the hotel. And then the stairway here, going to the amenity area for the hotel guests, and to the right is another stairway that goes to the amenity area for the condominium owners. Again, there will be something here in terms of a barrier, either in here or out here, depending on how we work that out with the county, that keeps vehicles, other than emergency vehicles, from entering and exiting the beach. Okay, you wanna hit the next one for me, Paul? The next set of slides? Sorry, some of these were so, unfortunately, them being blurry baffles me, because they're such a large file that yet we had to separate them, but, so they should be really clear, but, computers, what do you do? You guys can look at page six. I wanted the audience to be able to follow along, but if you look at page six, that's getting you back around to the opposite side of where we just were on the Oak Ridge Beach Approach. And it kind of gets you, these are now slices instead of the original bigger picture presentation. I'm going to the, some of the sections of the still pictures of Zeb Cohen's presentation that got us down to the street level. And if you look at the left-hand side, you kind of get a good feel for the, and again, if you look at your pages, you're gonna get a better feel, but for the depth of the arcade area there and how it wraps around from the A-1A frontage back into the Oak Ridge Approach area, all of that is retail area along the inside of the arcade. You also get a kind of a closer view of the bridge there, and kind of your first sort of feel of how the Seadunes property fits into this project as developed, if you look at the building right there on the right-hand side, to right of center. Okay, next one, Paul? Oh, you're already on the next one. All right, let's go to page eight. I guess page six and seven were pretty close, so we ended up blending them, go backwards. And this kind of gives you a closer view of the northerly portion of the arcade area along A-1A. Again, kind of giving you a feel for, if you look at the front there, you'll see some tables and chairs and people walking around there. We wanted to make sure there was plenty of room for that. At the concept review by the Redevelopment Board, there were some columns there that we were able to strengthen and have fewer columns, rather than columns that might interrupt pedestrian flow. So again, we received some input from the Redevelopment Board, and that was incorporated into the plan. Okay, next one? Just gives you, pulls you back a little further, so you can sort of see it at a little different scale. But it gives you a feel for how we integrate all of the landscape of Boulevard, sort of feel along A-1A, into the project. And you can kind of, again, get the scale of the building, as opposed to the picture you saw of the other buildings, I'm not naming any names here, because I think there are a lot of good things about those buildings, too, that were sheer from the sidewalk. This one has a lot of articulation, if you will, and steps back from A-1A. So the taller portions of the buildings are way away from the road. Okay, the next thing that you're gonna see, starting on page 10 in the handout that I gave you, and on the overhead, are a series of, one of the other things that we heard about at the Redevelopment Board meeting, the most recent one is, concerns about what some people call the greenhouse effect, others were calling shading concerns, you know, I guess temperature-related things for the most part. And so we did a shading study. Well, I call it a study, but essentially, it's showing you with computer-generated modeling how much shade's created by these buildings, different hours of the day, different seasons of the year. So at the beginning is June at 8:00 in the morning. Page 11 is June at 9:30 in the morning, and you'll start to see that, you know, a lot of this is very intuitive, but I think it's nice to see what it actually would look like. You'll see sort of the light coming through the middle there, which otherwise was shade. And then at noon, of course, it's light everywhere, for the most part, even in June especially. And then at 5:00 PM, still, everything on that, from that perspective, is lit. Now, I don't wanna be focused entirely on the Seadunes property, but I want you to know that part of this was generated based on them wondering how this was gonna shade them or heat them up or cool them down or affect them, and so we thought this would be important. And if you look at that June 5:00 PM picture, you'll see that they're still in the light, if you will, during June. And then we have a few slides that show December, just to kind of give you contrast, 8:00 in the morning, still the same as 8:00 in the morning in June, for the most part, but then you'll see at noon, I think we skipped 9:30 there, somehow lost that. We start to see the sun pretty much full, and then at 5:00 in the afternoon, you sort of get that wintertime glow, if you will. That might've been too much information for everybody, but I wanted to share it, because we did it, and I think it's helpful. The next page that you all have, page 17, I don't have a slide of, unfortunately, you guys have your 48-hour rule, and we had these produced within 48 hours, so we weren't able to get them to you, because, for fear of any viruses that we might've brought to you. But these next slides are intended to sort of give you a little bit of a feel for, I think you're gonna hear some from the Seadunes owners tonight and their representative, Jim Morris, about how they fit in here and what this may do to them, and we're doing our best to be good neighbors, and I think these slides do a good job of showing you how. If you'll look at the middle of the picture there, there's the Seadunes, but as you look around it, you sort of see how we've used the landscaping and hardscaping and other things to sort of integrate them into this project in a way that was as non-intrusive as we could for a 500-room-plus-room hotel. You'll notice that as you go south primarily and east from their building, our building is intended to be scaled similar to theirs as it's closest to them, and as you move away, the scale goes upwards. So it's tiered, if you will, and it tiers its way as you go away from their building. Okay, on page 18, it kind of just gives you the different angle of the same thing, and you're gonna get, from a perspective, you kind of get a little better flavor for the tiering that I was just talking about on the right-hand part of that picture. And you also sort of see the way that landscape wraps around the south side of their building. There was some discussion, Mr. Morris raised some, as you saw in his letter and as we heard at the Redevelopment Board meeting, some requests to move our building further to the south and away from them further. So I thought I'd give you a little better feel for what it's gonna look like. And the next page, page 19, gives you a direct aerial view of what we, and again, this is a landscape plan, this is consistent with the plan. We had some discussion with them when we met on Tuesday about the extent to which we could put landscaping across the front of the project, and I think we're still talking about that. If that were to happen, it may need to have, be located in a different place than it is here, further towards their building, if it was to happen. The landscaping that you see around the east and the south sides of their building, between our buildings, is on our property, and we will plant it that way. That's the way the landscape plan actually calls for the planting. So that's, this is what you're gonna see in real life. Now, I'd also point out to you, I mean, I'm focused on that south boundary, because that's the place that Jim was asking for additional setback. But if you look around the other side, you're gonna see that there's beautification and enhancement going on right up to the edge of this Seadunes motel from all directions. So that's what that aerial's intended to show. If you look at page 20, you're gonna get back down to the street level of what I'm just talking about. I mean, that picture speaks for itself, there's not much for me to say. That shows you what it's gonna look like when you're in the middle of the intersection, as opposed to that photograph that you saw, that Reed presented, from that very similar perspective of what's there today. And then page 21, boy, I didn't realize I had that many pages, gives you a direct look in from A-1A at the area between us and our neighbors. The area that you see that is not landscaped is their property, the area that you see landscaped is our property, and that's the edge between the two, if you will. And I think the page 22 is really just stepping back and going a little bit further south from that same view, kind of getting you the pedestrian-level view, or the motorist view, I guess, of their project. One of the things that, one of the other things in terms of setback that you'll hear me mention in a few minutes, that was raised by the owners of the Seadunes and Mr. Morris, was the location of our building along A-1A that you see in the foreground of that picture on page 22, and the extent to which it would block the view of their motel as you travel down the road. So this is intended to, I think, really illustrate what you see traveling down the road. I'm only rushing, because there's so much, and I apologize for taking so much time, but I think all of this is very relevant. On page 23, Reed gave you a view existing of that exact same picture, but it's, I think it's important to see what it'll look like after the fact from the same view. And of course, everything that you see on the left-hand side of the picture in terms of landscaping and in the background is new, as well as all of the hardscaping and landscaping that's happening along Oak Ridge Beach Approach, where the cars are parked there. And page 24 is just a different shot, that same area, moving down towards the hotel entrance on Oak Ridge. And you're gonna hear some from our transportation folks. Dan D'Antonio's gonna come talk to you more about what's happening on Oak Ridge. You see cars there parked, and you also see some cars moving in travel lanes, and he's gonna explain more about that to you in a few minutes. With that, I'm gonna make a few comments, and then I'm gonna let Dan get up and talk to you a little bit about that. Again, that was one of the subjects that's come up as we've worked our way towards you guys in this process. But I want to take a few minutes to emphasize a couple of the things, primarily that Reed brought to you and some highlights, but I want to make sure that, for the record primarily, we're very clear that, you know, there's a weighty package. I think somebody said if it took this long to build, was it you, Jeff? To build a hotel, that'd be amazing, to read this package. There's a lot of stuff in here, I hope you read it. I'm not gonna read it to you, because I thought I'd spend time showing you the pictures instead, because I'm gonna assume that you've read the package. There's a lot of material in here. I'm gonna highlight a couple of things that I want to make sure are part of the record tonight. Primarily, the staff's report to you, their recommendation to you as your professional guides in this process, as planners, as professional planners, they brought a recommendation of approval to you. And they've also determined that the application is consistent with your comprehensive plan, it's consistent with the land development code, and most importantly, for some of the conversation that may happen here in a few minutes, is compatible with the neighborhood, is compatible with the surroundings, and is in furtherance of all of the things that you've visualized and contemplated in your comprehensive plan. I also want to point to the Redevelopment Board minutes that are in your package, and I want to rely on the things that were said and done at the Redevelopment Board, both input from them and presentations given by us, much of which has been given to you again tonight. But I want to echo, I want to emphasize their seven-strong support for the project. I also want to mention to you that we've spent several months now in the, what we call the TRT process, technical review team, technical review of the application. This has been washed and rinsed through the fire department, the utility department, the engineering department, all the stormwater calculations have been done, and all of these things have been through the wringer, if you will, before they got to you. Happy to answer any questions you have, but I want to make sure that the record was clear that those things have been, all been reviewed and recommended for approval. I also want to mention to you that the submittal package that we brought to the process was voluminous as well, and I want to rely on that. I think you have most of it here. We brought detailed engineering, design specifications to you to explain that the project was consistent with all the requirements in your plan and in your development code. We've done traffic and parking studies that are part of your package. I'm not gonna bore you with those, I'm gonna give you a little bit of detail, as you'll see in a few minutes, about circulation, which I think is a really relevant issue. But all of the parking and the transportation information's in there, I would point you to that and hope that you rely on it. I also wrote a letter that's part of your package on December the 20th. If I had to read that letter to you, we'd be here another 30 minutes, so I'm not going to, but I'll tell you that it outlined, I hope you had a chance to read it, a lot of the public benefits the project brings. I did pull out a page of Reed's presentation where he began to read you the public benefits, and then he kind of stopped halfway through. And before I get done tonight, I'm gonna mention a few of those to you, but I'm not gonna do it right now. I will tell you that I not only talked about public benefits, I talked about comprehensive plan consistency, which is one of your threshold issues, as you know, in the letter that I wrote on December 20th. I also took the time to go look at the vision plan that we spent, that many citizens and those of you up here spent some time working on, and I found several things in there that this lines straight up with, and I listed them for you, I hope you looked at them. And I also looked at the E-zone master plan. It's something we don't talk about a lot of times when we have zoning cases, but this one hits it on the head. This one really brings forward a lot of the things that that plan was looking for as well. With that, I'm gonna tell you that, you know, we've been benefited by, I think, the comments that came from the Main Street Board members, that have come from citizens that have spoken on the project. We did have, as Reed mentioned, a meeting at the Ocean Center of the neighborhood, where we noticed, I think, everybody within 500 feet. We had a turnout, and we showed some things to them, and we had all positive feedback. And some of the feedback that we got from the Redevelopment Board, the neighbors, primarily the Seadunes folks and Jim Morris, had to do with a couple of main issues, and I'm gonna let Dan come up and talk about one of them. But parking and circulation for this scale of a project is a pretty relevant issue. Where are the cars and the trucks coming and going, and are they gonna block anybody's ability to get to their property? Are they gonna block A-1A traffic? Are they gonna do things that are detrimental? So we had studied those things, but we really hadn't put them in a form that you could visually understand what was gonna be going on, especially during the peak event times. One of the things that the Redevelopment Board asked about was, "Well, you guys are a convention hotel. When these conventions are going on, there's a lot of people coming in and out of these places. How are you gonna, how are your valet parking arrangements gonna handle the kind of volume?" So we, in the past week or so, since we got that message, have drilled down pretty hard on that. So I'm gonna let Dan, D'Antonio, come up and explain to you all the hours that he spent, and try to condense it into a few minutes for you about his conclusions on circulation, and then I'm gonna finish up for you after that.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board. For the record, my name is Dan D'Antonio. I'm a professional engineer in principle with Lassiter Transportation Group, 123 Live Oak Avenue, Daytona Beach, Florida. I apologize for having the handouts rather than the presentation, but as Rob mentioned, a lot of this stuff, a lot of these numbers have been crunched within the last two weeks, two to three weeks, especially a lot of work after visiting with the Redevelopment Board. But I appreciate Rob not boring you with my work. I have the pleasure of doing that. Joke for traffic engineers. But let me run through this quickly. A lot of it's arithmetic and algebra, I think you'll all be able to follow along. So since the Redevelopment Board, we put together a parking analysis and a site circulation analysis. The parking analysis is the thing that I'll talk about first, and actually, both questions are simple questions of demand and capacity. Do we have the capacity to serve the demand of the site? So if you flip past the first page, we're on the parking demand page. One of the things that's been identified so far is that we're asking... One of the things that's been identified so far is that we're asking for a 100 space reduction as compared to the code. I want to point out that that's as compared to the code. We didn't pull that new number, 682, out of thin air. We actually used a different, very relevant source. So if you see the part, the beginning of the slide there runs through the calculations based on code. And then is the source that we used, which is a national source based on empirical survey information. So very similar sites were looked at, well, what did this site need for parking? And that's where we ended up with 712 spaces. Now you're still not looking at that 682 that's been discussed so far. That's on the next slide. When you have uses that don't peak at the same time, you can take advantage of shared parking. So for example, you see we have hotel use, condo use and retail use. Retail use doesn't peak at the same time as a typical residential because they're complementary land uses. When you're going to use retail, you're not at your home. I mean, we think about that in terms of a driving trip, but here we're talking about, you know, sharing these based on peak function of the, of the type of land use. So after using another source, which is provided by the Urban Land Institute, which is a very reputable source, actually they put out national publications all the time, we found that we can take advantage of a 4% shared parking reduction, which yielded the 682 spaces. And I think it'll make a lot of sense if you look at those numbers so far. On the first slide, we showed that retail requires 40 spaces for that level of retail and they can give up 30 at 11:00 PM on a weekend during February, which is the peak time for this entire operation. And that's where we get the 712 and the 682. That's parking demand. So now moving into parking capacity, I'll see, is your next slide parking overflow?
Yes.
Well, let's go to parking capacity and I apologize. Peak parking capacity, and I don't know how they got out of order in here. As you all know, we were looking at using a robotic parking system. We had a lot of conversations with Park Plus, who's a vendor who has a very efficient system. Fortunately, they, it's also very proprietary, so what we can say is, we ask them or we actually give them our demand numbers and they tell us what we need. So what Park Plus is out of South Florida, there's as much information on the internet about them as you want to look at. They said that we need six entry stations, four vertical transfer modules and four VRCs. VRCs are actually vertical reciprocating conveyors. So those are the small bugs that actually pick up the pallet and move the cars around. With that, we can serve 561 vehicles per hour. So again, you do the math on the demand, the capacity and you end up with excess capacity of 181 vehicles per hour. So the robotic parking system is not going to lead to any kind of onsite circulation deficiencies. Yeah, well, if you'd like, we can show a video specifically of the robotic operations and actually I'll also end with a video of our onsite circulation. So that answers our parking question. Next question was the site circulation operations, which was the second memo we put together in addition to the traffic impact study and the parking study. You'll see on, on our graphic, which is over to the left here, we've identified the need for two egress lanes and one ingress lane. The one ingress lane is actually a benefit to our adjacent property because as you all know, when you're pulling out on the two-lane street versus pulling out on a one-lane street, you have a higher probability of gaps on that one-lane street versus the two, because two, you may have cars in different lanes at different periods of time and that's traffic engineering, what's the probability of being able to go. So you also know that our primary parking operations will be valet attendance. Valets will take the car from the patron, deliver it to the robotic machine, the robotic machine will park it and they'll come back. Another benefit we have about this site is that our robotic machine and our valet operations are very close, so we don't have a long cycle time on that valet run. Go down into, and this is where I, I described the parking system a little bit more in detail. We, we have three moving components, entry and exit stations, transfer modules and VRCs. Those are the numbers that will serve this site. Boy, I apologize for it being out, but I will take you to the next one, which is actually parking and onsite circulation, parking vehicle stacking demands, which is a function of really our distance to A1A in the, in the traffic circle. We have 115 feet. It's a short distance. We crunched the numbers to make sure we didn't have a back out onto A1A. We're very confident we don't have a back out onto A1A. We have a video at the end that shows how those operations will work. And we have two lanes exiting. We have two lanes exiting because we're working with DOT and Volusia County on that traffic signal at Oak Ridge and they're going to want the green time and the capacity for those major arterials. So we need to dump the traffic out of our site to ensure that the traffic circle doesn't stack up. You see, we have the stacking capacity inbound for 13 vehicles and that, that actually takes into account very efficient valet operations, which in our research on this job, and if you've been to any other event where they're doing valet, they'll actually move the car up and pack them in much tighter than a driver will before a valet attendant can go park it wherever it needs to be parked. So we can double stack them in the traffic circle and this 13 is all, is only back to the first parking space on Oak Ridge on the south side. And then our outbound capacity is a function of the two lanes. We can stack 10 vehicles and you can see that our 95th percentile Q is actually less than we can stack. And that brings me to the summary, which is that we did our parking demand based on national sources, national rates, studied data as opposed to the code. On the parking overflow issue, we are actually pursuing offsite parking overflow. We're looking at a couple of properties in the area so that, you know, if you're uncomfortable with the request for a reduction in the code value, we will have that parking overflow. We're looking for 100 spaces. That would put us in compliance with code, although again, we are comfortable with the numbers that we've calculated here. And we are looking at our robotic parking system can handle our, our demand. And, you know, Rob mentioned that this is basically analysis and the next thing that the, the next step in it is the, is actually the management strategies that we've been asked to make a, an exhibit to this agreement. So I wanted to just mention what some of those strategies may be. If we're looking at allowing gaps for our adjacent property to move out or to pull out and to pull in, we can do a lot of that stuff with the traffic signal that's adjacent to us, because that, that traffic signal is only allowing cars to enter this site when they get a green. So when you have green time for A1A and you have green time for Oak Ridge, that acts as a meter to, to provide gaps for that patrons of that parcel to pull out. We can look at ensuring staffing of the valet is in accordance with the demand. Again, I mentioned the overflow lot. Bus accommodations, we're looking at using quite a few buses to actually deliver patrons to this site. And you may look at that traffic circle and say it's, it's pretty packed, but we do have that, that road on the south side, the east side and the north side where we can move those bus operations to the, to the service road. And then signage. Everyone's seen signs, do not block intersection, whether they be inbound, outbound. And that actually, you know, if people abide by them or not, at least it makes them aware and they're much more courteous drivers. And quickly, Paul, do you mind showing that site circulation simulation?
This is one of the vendors that were, there are three or four different robotic parking vendors and this is one of the ones that we, we got the video from to show you sort of how it works. In layman's terms, there's a, there's some acronym for this, I'm sure, but there's an elevator, several of them that bring your car up after you bring it to the valet into the parking garage. This is the entrance to the, to the elevator, if you will. Okay, kind of give the plane. It's all computerized. So this is someone who's parking their own car. So the residents that live on the north tower have the opportunity to park their own car in the, in the robotic parking system. Everybody who goes to the hotel has to valet. So essentially you have this little creepy crawly thing that goes up underneath the car, also robotic and computer, computer run. And it moves, it can move your car to the spot it's supposed to be in. Now there, there's actually a narration that goes with this. We must not have got the, it got cut like the yawning music. But, so I'll tell you what, what they, what they said essentially is, there are different types of these systems. Some are on tracks and some are actually free-form like this. They're actually these little machines that come up underneath the car, move it around. If you use this system instead of the track system, you really can move things around in an infinite number of different ways to get cars in and out and pack them in tightly. And they're going to show you in a minute how tightly they can pack them in and go fish one out that might look like it's, it's landlocked. Obviously a much more efficient use of space for valuable real estate on the ocean, number one. Number two, you don't have the cars running when they're in there, so we don't have environmental, we have environmental benefits from it. This is showing you again how they can get in there and grab a car out with this type of system and move the other cars out of the way that need to be moved out of the way. So you can have as many of the little creepy crawlies, if you will, as you need.
This is the VRCs.
The VRCs, yeah. But it's just, I mean, I, like I said, I think the video speaks a thousand words. It's just, we've, I've, I've never seen this. It does exist in several places. I mentioned the redevelopment board, they have it. One of the questions that came up with the redevelopment board is, is this something that's compatible with the salt environment that we live in? It has been utilized and is operating in St. Petersburg, Florida, as well as in Dubai and some other places that, that have salt environments. As you can see, this is all inside anyway. And all, and all of the creepy crawly things, if you will, are independent, independent robotic devices. So if one of them gets rusty, you can get a new one. And much like elevators that have been bringing people up and down hotels on the beach for many years in the salt environment, these are just elevators.
As Paul brings up the simulation of our onsite circulation, I want to just explain a little bit how we built this model. It's actually a very highly technical traffic engineering model, the model that's normally used for optimizing traffic signals for progression. So we did have to marry this up for, for pure visual purposes, but what, what you're seeing happening is actually very accurate in terms of timing, but you may see things like the cars driving over small portions of the curb and that's just with the graphic overlaid on an actual road network that we built underneath. And it's only around the south side of the traffic circle there. This is a minute. You can ask for it to be shut off whenever you'd like, if you'd like.
When I showed you all those pictures of the Oak Ridge Beach Approach as it's improved, it's pretty spacious down there on the, on the ocean side of it. And he's only utilizing the areas that he considers to be traffic lanes, if you will. But there's a lot of other space. There's kind of temporary parking areas all over the place if you were staging, needed to stage more cars. He's maxing you out not only with a peak time, which is, I guess, 11:00 PM race week or something like that, but it, but it maxes out everything. It maxes the retail at its peak time, the, the, the hotel at its peak time and the residential, which intuitively, I'm sure you're going to realize that residents that live in this condo are going to know not to go, try to get out of the place when it's a peak time, either a convention time or race week or something like that. So it's absolutely the worst-case analysis that you just saw cars moving in and out of the site. And again, computer-generated, based on the actual numbers. So that's how it works. Dan, I'm going to, I'm going to let you sit down and if they have any questions, you or anybody else.
Oh, ask the questions at the end of everybody? I just had it, just one quick one. The, so did I hear you say that what you're planning on doing, was it for the, I guess the commission, you're attaching this as a traffic plan or?
Let me, let me try to address that because that's sort of my, my directive to Dan. The, the analysis is done. You saw the results of the analysis being modeled right there. Something that was pointed out to us by Mr. Morris, I think, and some of the redevelopment board members is, well, we really want to know that, that if, if the analysis assumes that you have four valet parking attendants during peak times, we want to know that you're going to have them. It's an appropriate request. So what I'm going to ask of you tonight as it relates to this subject matter is to consider the, the materials that have been presented to you. And if you, we, we will volunteer that prior to the city commission, we'll have a plan that will need to be implemented as part of the operation of the facility. Again, this is, this is drilling a lot deeper than we usually do at a zoning approval process, but these are appropriate, this is such a big project. These are appropriate requests and, and so we're, we're willing to do that. So that's what I would ask of you on, on that subject and I'm happy to answer any questions or have Dan answer when we get done. I just had a few more things that I wanted to say to, to close on this. One of, one of them is that all of the things that you just heard from Dan about, really were a result of things that we heard from our neighbors and from the redevelopment board. So we had a productive process leading up to this, this meeting tonight that I think has resulted in some tweaks and some, some changes here and there to make sure things worked and then our ability to demonstrate that to you with, with empirical evidence that you've just seen. The other subject matter that I, that I mentioned to you earlier, there's sort of really two big subjects. One of them you just heard about, parking, circulation, transportation impacts. Dan didn't go into the aspect of that that deals with the larger trucks that are moving in and out, garbage trucks, delivery trucks, et cetera. But that, all that's been analyzed as well, so I'll mention that in case you have questions about it, we're happy to answer it. There are designated places on this property, which we, I didn't get into and I showed you sort of the highlights where those vehicles come in and out. There's a lot more circulation happening other than those little green cars that you saw, actually around the outsides of the property as well as along Oak Ridge and in that area that have to do with more service-oriented deliveries and vehicular movements. Again, I want to point it out to you because that was something that did come up with the redevelopment board. One of the other issues that came up and you saw it in Mr. Morris's letter to you on behalf of the, the immediate neighbors was the question of setbacks. We, we wrestled with what we could do in addition to what you saw in terms of trying to be good neighbors. The, the problem that we had was anytime we tried to move one of those structures that was near them, it had such a push-pull effect on the rest of the project. It, it turned out that the gentleman sitting in the second row here that are, are prepared to invest upwards of, of $100 million in our community, needed a certain model to work and it required a certain number of hotel rooms, certain number of residences and a certain amount of convention space. And once we started to hack pieces off of it and it pushed other pieces around, it just didn't work. So I'm, I'm sorry to not be able to come to you and say, yeah, we can just move this building back 50 feet or however many feet was requested, but I would, I would encourage you to remember the pictures that I showed you of that interface. Remember the landscaping, remember the tiered scale that I showed you moving away from them. I think they've done, I think the architects, the landscape architects have done a real good job trying to be good neighbors with these folks and will continue to. And I, and we've, we've met, we've talked and there may be, there may be other things that, that can be done in that regard, but I think, I think we've done a good job. As I mentioned, Reed, Reed did a fantastic job and I, I'm sorry to have spent so much time talking about all the things the staff brought to you, but this is a weighty package and I want to make sure you, you thought about and relied on it. But when Reed started to read the public benefits of this project, some of them are just obvious. I'm not going to sit here and, and read them over and over to you. Everybody knows we need a quality new hotel on the beach to, for the Ocean Center to work. We've put millions of dollars, our dollars into the expansion of the Ocean Center. It's not working yet. Don Pores here tonight, I think he's going to mention to you how this could help his operation and I think that's something that you ought to take into consideration. But the things that Reed kind of skipped over here, some of the numbers, you know, I mentioned them earlier, we're talking about tax base here. You guys hear about this, when a project of this size, 100, 120, 130 million dollars gets put into the tax rolls, it, it makes a big difference. The beach access, you've seen some of the visuals that I've showed you about that, so I won't mention that too much. But employment, I think that's something you don't hear a lot about when people bring projects in front of you. If you read the staff report, you'll see that the numbers are 1,489 jobs and 51.9 million payroll during the construction of the project. I mean, that's, that's pretty phenomenal. I, I don't get to get up here and say that very often. 399 permanent jobs for the hotel operations. And, and the, the change that's going to occur in this area of, of the beachside, I'm confident that it's going to be contagious. And that's why I'm so excited about this and I hope you are too. I think without question, when we see cranes in the sky building a 120 million dollar hotel on the beach, people are going to take notice of what's going on in Daytona Beach for the right reasons in this case. And I encourage you to, to think about that when you're making your decision tonight. And we're here to answer any questions for you. Like I said, we've got several people here that some have come from a long way. Like I said, we've got several people here that some have come from a long way. I know we have some comments that will come from others in the audience, some in support, some with raising questions and concerns. I'd like to, as the applicant, as I think normal protocol allows, reserve the right to try to respond to any comments or questions that come up from the audience. With that, questions from you?
Are there any questions of the applicant at this time? I think we've heard a lot.
Must mean you loved it.
All right. We have some speakers on this. Mr. Charles Lickman, speaking for and against. Mr. Lickman?
Yes. Yes, please. My name is Charles Lickdickman. I'm here representing the owners of the 444 Seabreeze Building, which is the largest office building on the peninsula and houses in excess of 300 professional employees. The owners and most of the employees of the building firmly support this project. This is a transformative project that can help to increase the number of employees in the area and help to better the working environment. We urge you not to give in to death by a thousand cuts for this project, and to please consider the benefits that this has for the working community and the investors in the Seabreeze Oak Ridge area. Thank you.
Good. Next speaker, Mr. Don Pore.
Good evening, Mr. Moore, members of the board. Thank you very much for giving me an opportunity to speak briefly on this subject. I was watching this movie the other night, not important really what the name of it was, the important thing was the question that it begged.
I'm sorry.
And it was done in Hollywood.
I'm sorry, who are you?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I skipped over that, didn't I? I'm Don Pore, I'm the director of the Ocean Center. My address at work is 101 North Atlantic Avenue. My home address is 1931 Cold Point Road, Port Orange, excuse me, that's moved from Georgia, Florida. Okay? I was watching this movie the other night, it's not important what the name was, as I was saying, that it really was important, the question that it begged. And the question was, it started out in Hollywood, as many movies do, and on the street, a gentleman was walking, kind of talking and singing at the same time, saying, "What's your dream? Welcome to Hollywood. We all have a dream. What's yours?" And so it begged the question for me, that all of us as leaders, get involved in our daily work and doing what we do, and sometimes we lose the vision of where we're going. And what's the dream? So my question was, to myself and to you as leaders of the community, what's your dream? And more specifically, what's your dream for Daytona Beach? You know, the News Journal wrote several series of articles a short while back, talking about the blighted areas in Daytona, and talked about from Ormond Beach all the way south to Dunlaughton. And specifically listed about 240 vacant lots and businesses. 150 of those are located on A1A itself. A lot of work to be done there. And my question to myself is, is status quo, is that our vision? Do we accept that as a vision? Or do we have something that's loftier than that? And do we have something in the future that brings more to us? The answer to that partially is, there is negative in those numbers, but they are reality. The other part of it is, there have been some positive things happening in the community with the Ocean Walk Village being built a few years back, and the Wyndham Hotel connected to it. The Adam and Smart folks doubled the size of the original Marriott, and that is now 744 rooms. The county expended $80 million four years ago this February for the Ocean Center. And more recently, the work the city of Daytona has done on the pier and the addition of Joe's Crab Shack. All of those things are critically important to the core economic engine that is in that area. But they're all foundations, and they all lay a foundation for the total ability and capability of that core area being a tremendous economic engine for the whole community. And it's very similar in purpose to what the Daytona Speedway is talking about doing in their mixed-use development. In essence, my dream for that area would be to develop a destination within the destination. Daytona Beach is a tremendous tourist destination and a great convention destination. It's got beautiful oceans, it's got beautiful lakes, beautiful rivers, flora, fauna, everything you could imagine entertainment-wise. But to be successful in a convention center, as well as in a tourist area, what you have to do is build a smaller destination that actually is a microcosm of a city that has all the things the attendees need, and without the use of a vehicle. They want to get to the hotel, go to their meeting space, go shop in retail, be entertained, eat, see culture, and do everything they can without having to get back in a vehicle. And essentially, that's what we're trying to incorporate in that site down there. From the convention standpoint alone, most of the folks for the current-sized facility we have tell us that we need about 2,000 committable hotel rooms that are first-class hotel rooms within walking distance. Currently, we have 744 available rooms with the Hilton, maybe 150 to 200 from the Wyndham at most. So roughly, we have about 1,000 available rooms, which are not the same thing as committable rooms. Many times throughout the year, those hotels may be using 50% or 60% of those for other purposes. So that reduces us down to about 500. The important thing in developing a project, as we're talking about in the core in this microcosm, is that everything that goes into that development has to create a synergy for everything else that's in that development. It all has to make each other work better. The big void that we have at the Ocean Center currently, to obtain the total viability of that core as an economic engine, is a lack of quality hotel rooms within walking distance. This will give us, this particular project, 500 additional first-class rooms within walking distance. It's a very powerful tool for us to help sell the Ocean Center. And we would like to see that. And as Robert said earlier, I think it's quite appropriate. And when you're talking about developing a redevelopment area, many developers do not want to come in until they, no developer as a rule wants to be the first one in, because they want the area to prove itself first. But once one comes in and becomes successful, everybody wants to be the second one. And this is the type of quality development, this hotel project, that the Ocean Center and that entire core needs and would be a tremendous asset to. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Frank Gepel.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Frank Gepel. I represent the Daytona Beach Regency. I'm a senior.
Can we have your address? I'm sorry.
I will. It's 400 North Atlantic Avenue, the Daytona Beach Regency address. I personally live in Windermere, Florida. I'm here with two other board members. I serve as a director on the Homeowners Association Board for the Daytona Beach. I'm here with Mr. Walter Hunter, lives in Apopka, and Mr. Kamish Asola, who lives in St. Augustine. I'm also the senior vice president, business development and homeowners association management for Diamond Resorts International, the manager of the Daytona Beach Regency. We are in support of this project. We are predisposed to look favorably towards projects that have any direct or indirect economic benefit to our community, especially one of this quality. We do, however, have a few concerns. And I'm glad Mr. Merle's here this evening, perhaps he can answer some for us. The shading as cast on the Daytona Beach Regency could be problematic. And if you look in the schematics that were passed out, if you look to page 16 in particular, you'll see to which I'm referring. The view corridors from the Daytona Beach Regency could also be adversely impacted. Much conversation was given about the sea dunes and Mr. Morris and concerns for his property, and I respect that. Unfortunately, we weren't available to participate in the community discussions that took place prior this evening. But we would like to perhaps look at the development plan to see if there's a way to mitigate some of those concerns, if possible. We're also concerned about the egress and ingress of delivery vehicles, garbage trucks, things of that nature, because that part of the project, in our review this afternoon of the plans, is in the southwest corner of the property, which is immediately adjacent to the northwest corner of the Regency. So delivery of food and beverage, other materials, linen and terry, as well as housekeeping supplies and garbage is of concern. When the project goes under construction, we have some concerns, and we realize that's a ways off, but we have some experience with our neighbors to the south at the Wyndham, which was a project we also supported and are glad to have seen built. But construction began there early in the morning and was a distraction to our guest satisfaction that we would like to at least have a dialogue with the developers about, because we think the success of the project is being a good neighbor. And then finally, you know, traffic is a major concern. We have had issues at the Regency, especially on peak event weekends. And with the convention center, I'm glad to see, as are my fellow board members, that a great deal of thought and consideration's gone into that, because we believe that's important and are in support of all the efforts that have taken place to date and what appear to be going to be taking place going forward as this project progresses. So with that, if we could perhaps have some additional discussion relative to the shading of the Daytona Beach Regency, view corridor obstruction, and the garbage and delivery collection, and some photographs of that area of the project, if they exist, would be helpful. Thank you, everybody. And again, my board members and I would like to reiterate our support for this quality project.
Thank you. Mr. Sean Belgrade.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and board members. Name is Sean Belgrade, 2907 Riverpoint Drive, Daytona Beach, Florida. I'm currently the chairman of the Halifax Area Advertising Authority, as well as a board member of the Daytona Beach Convention and Visitors Bureau. I'm going to be brief. I think there's a lot of people have said a lot of the comments that I want to say here tonight. But this resort would be a huge benefit to this destination. We're in, this destination's in need of this type of quality of hotel and resort. This resort will allow Daytona Beach to be a much more competitive tourist and beach destination moving forward. Additionally, this property can be a huge asset to the world-class convention center that our community has invested in, the Ocean Center, which will be just down the street from this. The addition of these upscale-type rooms will allow the destination to attract more and much larger conventions to the area. As Don said earlier, we currently lack the quality of these types of rooms, thus eliminating us from attracting very large convention-type business. To move forward, grow, and be competitive destination, we need projects like this and investments like this in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granby Avenue. I've lived across the street from this project about 30 years now. We need this kind of project. I've seen 40 projects go in in the neighborhood. I saw the Ocean Walk, the Ocean Center, all of that going in. It was just a matter of time before something went in this location. It matches everything that went in. It's even better in terms of there's not a parking garage sitting on A1A, like the four blocks just to the south of this. I'm glad they have shops there. I wish that the Brang Lesby had purchased the property. I know after the hurricanes, I mean, I think it was 475,000 before the hurricane, it went down to 425,000. I wish these people had purchased it for $400,000, but I guess they didn't. Nobody's basically been there for the last eight years. I walk past this all the time. I walk in the morning. If anybody's going to be there, their cars will be there between 3, 4, 5 o'clock in the morning, and there are never any cars there. So I know these people that live there probably want to sell it, and it should be part of this project, and I don't know why it isn't. When you saw the video, and I hate to hit Jim badly, but as you come across the bridge, it is not 40 blocks long. It's only four blocks long, all right? And you see in the video, a nice parking garage right next to the bank, right there on Grand View, I live on Grand View. It's 10 foot wide. You can't put a parking garage in 10 foot. So it's a little bit, so watch a lot of this with a grain of salt. It's a great project, and those little minor things, he's trying to sell it, of course, and this is a no-brainer. It's what should be on that location. Hopefully, it will be on that location in the next three years. I do have a couple of small problems. One is the parking. They have X number, 502 rooms, 105 rooms, whatever. There's 600 and some odd, what I call, parking spaces. But then what do you do with the guest parking that you normally would have at the condos? What do you do with the people that are working in the retail? Not the guests that coming by to use it, because they'll be walking down the sidewalk, but the people that are actually walking it, they're going to be parking and working in those shops. The management, where are they going to park? By the time you keep adding this up, I'm not quite sure we should waive that 100 parking spaces. If you do look at waiving it on the beach, then I hate the idea of having parking in the neighborhood, but the plaza does it, and I think it might be a viable solution. I have a problem with the palm trees. We went through this when we redid A1A several years ago. I talked about it, went to the CRA board, the city manager, my city commissioner, and nothing was done about the palm trees. Went to the Americans with Disabilities, they went in and popped, it cost us $26,000 to get those palm trees out. I would ask you to be very careful that these match the palm trees that are in front of the Wyndham, that distance back. If it does, I don't have a problem with it. The lanes, I'm glad they have the three lanes coming out of this project onto A1A. It solves a great deal of problems. It's a perfect match for that. It is an upgrade also for the neighbors. What they need for water and electric will help the neighborhood. So it's not only just for them, we that live in the neighborhood are going to get something from this. We're going to lose a little bit, but we're not going to lose that much. When the Wyndham went in, I could look out my bedroom window, and I could see not only the beach, but I could see the sand. It went in, whatever they put in, I'm going to lose a view of the beach. Whatever they put in, I'm going to lose shade for a certain period of time. It's been there 10, 20 years, I don't even notice it. It will not be a problem. And I understand the gentleman looking at that picture on page 16, that shade comes from their building. It does not come from this project. When I walk, I watch where the sun goes. The same thing happens at the Wyndham. I walk up North Ocean Avenue, and the shade is on that building, not from the building next door, but from their own building. So I'm asking you to look at this, to look at the parking spaces and the palm trees, but otherwise, vote it up, it's a great project. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you, John. Colleen Niklund? All right. Jim, would you like to speak first or last?
I'd go last.
All right.
Good evening, Chairman, and fellow board members. My name is Paulita Kundit. I'm with the Sea Dunes Apartments, 430 North Atlantic Avenue. We are not actually opposed to this very impressive project, but we are here to address our concerns as adjacent property owners, and how this development affects our property rights, which we have enjoyed for over 53 years there. It also affects our ability to operate our hotel there, the Sea Dunes. We have grown up here all our lives. We originally came from Illinois when I was two years old, when my parents bought that place. We -- there was three of us children, and we grew up going to the local schools. Our Lady of Lourdes went on to high school, and then I stayed and went to college here, where my brother and sister went on to FSU. After college, we decided, you know, that we would love to stay in this community. This is our community. We love it. We have lifelong friends here. I have business associates about a block, a couple of blocks from here. I own another business that is a court reporting business that I enjoy operating, as well as the Sea Dunes. We are seriously concerned about the backyard and side yard setbacks, particularly the Our side yard will never, in our backyard, will never see sun again. We'll never even feel a breeze. We'll never even feel the sea breeze again, period. The greenhouse effect from the 30-foot-high walls and the proposed 16-foot side setbacks will throw off more heat than we can imagine, or a thermal engineer can probably measure. It will also dramatically expand and contract our building. Convection oven comes to mind. Even in the shade, we're going to feel it. The walls being 16 feet away from us, that are almost over 30 feet high, will also give us a feeling of this claustrophobic, if you can imagine, that encompassing your own property. The traffic flows and ingress and egress will negatively impact our driveway. As of right now, from Oak Ridge up into our driveway, you can only get four cars comfortably there before we're going to be stacking up. In our driveway, the -- our guests will back into the street, not to mention our garbage pickups and things like that. It is my understanding that we were allowed 152-foot side setback on the south yard and 25 feet on the backyard. We were trying to be good neighbors, and having discussions was saying we could reduce this to a 50-foot side, south side setback. But that's all it's been, is discussion at this point. There are many parking issues, and that will be discussed later by Jim Morris, but I just want you to really consider carefully what you're doing and how it affects everybody's property rights. Theirs, ours, and we've lived here for a very long time. They may be thinking about looking at off-street parking, but nothing has been proven yet. They're just talking about it. You need to look at this very, very carefully, because it will change the complexion of the beachside. And again, we're not against it, but this is an enormous project that they don't have to undertake to make this so enormous to create problems for adjacent property owners. Everyone's rights need to be protected and respected, and I just hope you all will consider it very carefully and not rush into anything. Look at every single thing carefully. Really appreciate your time tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We hear from Michael Kundit?
Yeah. I'm calling my little sister.
All right.
I'm Michael Kundit, 430 North Atlantic Avenue, owner with my sister, Paulita. Yeah, we've been there, like she said, 53 years. Our parents bought it in 1960. Both our parents died tragically in 1980, so that was 33 years ago. My sister and I, well, I'm an attorney in town, my sister has a court reporting business. After our parents died, we continued to work the field, my sister. I put myself through law school after my parents died. My sister went on with her business. We're successful in the community. But I wanted to let you all know, we're not absentee owners. It's my sister and I, in spite of our professional careers, we worked the property. You're looking at the maintenance man, even though I'm an attorney. I'm there on Saturday mornings. I'm there painting the fence. I did it two weeks ago. Hopefully you noticed that when you went by, but just letting you know, we worked the property. There's no, it's just family members. So, I have a former wife, she works the property with us, so just letting you know, we're totally hands-on. There's no, nobody else that does it except us. We have repeat business, the same, some of the same people have been coming to our property since I was four years old, and they're offspring, and they don't want to stay anywhere else. And so, we're proud of that fact. In fact, we have some people now from North Carolina. They come a couple of times a year. The man there was friends with my father, he's 85 years old now, and they don't want to stay anywhere else. Just wanted to give you some background about who we are. Now, I also want to say, we're very proud. We've kept up the property over the years, through the hurricanes, especially the 2004 hurricanes. We're the last ones kind of standing in the neighborhood there, along A1A, in spite of all the new development. We've paid our taxes, we've tried to keep up the property, we're proud of it. We don't have any police problems, we don't rent to bad people. We've had discussions earlier in the week with the people who want to put this project in. We're trying to be good neighbors. They're engulfing us, as you can tell. We're asking for some elbow room. We want them to be good neighbors. There's no olive branch coming our way from them to work with us. We will be totally engulfed. It will be a massive traffic jam. I won't go into all the particulars, but we don't believe they are being good neighbors to us. We are in favor of the project. We love Daytona Beach. Been here since I was four, absolutely love it, and we hope there's something that would be built there that would at least sit well with us. And I hope you pay close attention to the particulars of this as it relates to us and as it relates to the greater Daytona Beach area. I think it'll be wonderful. I know the Ocean Center needs additional hotel space for larger conventions, and I think in the future it'll be good, but I don't believe it should be this big. Anyway, that's all I have to say. I appreciate your help. I know we're in your hands here, and I'm sure you'll make the right decision, all right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman and commission members, I'm Jim Morris. I represent the Kundits. I wanted them to speak so you could see them. We don't suggest to you that this project should be killed or should not occur, but we also would suggest to you that their rights should not be killed or crushed by the project. And when Rob said that his crew had, his team had done a good job, I smiled a little bit, because they've done a fantastic job. They've done a great presentation to you. What they haven't done is made any adjustments whatsoever in the discussion that we've had as it relates to issues that the Kundits have with this proposal. They haven't proposed to increase the setback in any way. They haven't proposed to append a traffic management plan that the city can enforce. And if you recall Rob's answer, I was listening to that, what we have specifically asked is that a traffic management plan be a part of the development agreement. And why would we want that? Well, first of all, if you recall the video the traffic engineer showed, and it's, we were looking particularly at the stop-and-go in front of the Sea Dunes. There was not a traffic light sequence in that peak hour that didn't show cars completely blocking the Sea Dunes property, whether it was inbound or outbound. And a traffic management plan would give enforcement capability for how the traffic and parking is managed on this property to the city. Without it, you have, the city has, no control whatsoever as it relates to parking management and trip management on this property. And it's very, very important. When you look at some of the notations in the traffic study, you'll see that they reference overflow parking, but every statement makes it clear, they have no overflow parking commitment of any kind, other than they're going to look for it. They've asked you for a parking waiver, and they're waiving, excuse me, 100 parking places. This is their request. And there are different numbers in there, and there was a letter, in my letter, I had a number that was based on counting actual parking places shown in their plan, and I'll speak to you about that detail in a minute, but here's what I want you to focus on for the moment. The parking waiver is to delete 100 places, essentially provide 682 parking places. This is what it will park. 607 occupiable spaces, 500 hotel rooms, 502 hotel rooms, 105 condominium units, 15,000 square feet of convention space, and 3,100 square feet of retail space. In that, you have 37 underground spaces, so I'm assuming the general public cannot get to those at all. You have 29 surface spaces, which I assume will be used for valet. The other 90% are robotic. Now, the number that I didn't see addressed in that traffic study, but it's been mentioned twice in the presentation in the Public Benefits, is the 400 employees that will be permanent employees with this project. You may recall the reference to 400, 1,400 some odd construction jobs, the construction. All that relates to parking and traffic management. I made my way through all the schooling that I have, working on construction projects in Daytona Beach. I worked as a mason or mason's helper for over 10 years, up and down buildings on the beachside, and I can tell you, you park where you can, when you can, because you're going to be late for work at 6:30 or 7:00 in the morning. 400 employees, the discussion of Oak Ridge. They showed you photographs of trees and landscaping along Oak Ridge. If you ask, you will be told there is no commitment by them to do that landscaping. It's what they hope will occur. What they intend is to construct a new water main, because they need it, for fire flow to service this property. And they have said in prior meetings that they would like to have tax support to reimburse them for that. These are all parts, the details of the plan, that aren't glamorous, aren't attractive, but things that require attention. I would ask each of you, not to necessarily answer my question, but think, did you understand the traffic study and analysis? I did not. I do this a lot. I listen to traffic engineers a lot. What I know is Daytona Beach does not have its own traffic engineer on staff, and while I respect the Lassiter Group and the professionals employed by them, they have a particular job to perform. And the city of Daytona Beach should not permit this project to move forward without an independent review of that traffic study and analysis. One of the things you were shown in the videos, and I know you will remember this, is left-turn movements coming off of Oak Ridge from the eastern side, in other words, from the beach, turning left on A1A. It presently is not permitted by the current signalization and signage that DOT has. You can't do it. So, that requires the DOT to approve that part of it. Another reason why you need a traffic management plan that takes the analyses and incorporates those into something the city can enforce to make sure, if there are traffic issues, you can at least look at this project as a city and make sure the emphasis that you had in management can be enforced by your city through the code enforcement process. Otherwise, it's gone. And as I said, I'm not suggesting this project should be killed. It's an amazing project, but it is so, so much on a relatively small piece of property. When you look at what you're being asked to do with the PCD, and there's criteria set out in your staff report, it starts at page 10, you're asking to waive any number of criteria that you have, and the basis for that waiver is the public benefit that's created. And no one denies that there's public benefit here, but a part of our law is that public benefits shall not be created at the expense of the individual. In other words, if all of us feel good about it, if we wipe out one person in the room, we'll all be fine? The wipeout of that person in the room is maybe okay with everybody, but the person that's going to be wiped out, they probably have some objections. And our system of law has always incorporated the idea that you balance the rights, and we're not asking for a lot from the standpoint of what we want to see done, but we do want, and we do think there should be, a greater setback from the southern boundary of the Kundit's property. The waiver that's requested is approximately 90% of what the code requires. The distance from here to here is approximately the proposed separation between the Kundit's property line and the line of the building proposed by Proto Group, and that building will be taller than the Kundit's property. If you go back to the shading studies, and those are in your packet and you can see them, but what you will notice is, it's a beachside hotel. The first ray of light you see in the morning, in June, at the Kundit's property in this plan, occurs at 9:30 in the morning. Sunrise in the summer is generally a little bit before 6:00. Roughly three hours after sunrise, their property sees a little bit of sunshine. I don't know that there's a way to correct that, but what I'm getting to is the balancing of public benefits against private rights. And this proposal has not done anything since our meeting day before yesterday, and I tried hard to have it earlier, that was as soon as we could get everyone there. It doesn't do anything to adjust or buffer the Kundit's perspective. You were shown a side view, a kind of an angled view from A1A, of how you'd see the Kundit's property, but think about the experience you've had driving north on A1A along the Hilton areas. How far to the side can you see? It's only a few feet. We have suggested that that 80% waiver of setback they request there should be stepped back to maintain some of the view corridor of the property that is the Sea Dunes property. That also has not been acceptable. And when we discussed the setback, of the increased setback on the south line, we were told, well, the ballroom needs to be so big, and we've got these other structures there, and that's really, we've got to have it that way. Why do they have to have it that way? They have to have it that way because they did a complete set of architectural plans without ever having a single piece of zoning approval, and moving one little piece moves everything. No one did that, except the proponents of the proposal. And when I wrote to you, and I got everyone but you, Mr. Davis, you lived in a place where I couldn't reach you to hand deliver it, and I'm sorry for that. What I pointed out is the necessity to balance and also to keep your eyes wide open and don't, you know, man, it's the greatest thing in the world. It is a good project, but you have to be circumspect in the proposal. I've outlined the concerns to you. There's valid reasons for those concerns, and I strongly, strongly suggest and hope that you will ask the city commission to have an independent review of this traffic study and the parking waiver, because there's nobody on your staff, I don't believe, that has the qualification to review the findings of the traffic study. I don't have them either, but I am somewhat concerned about what they do. I do have, Paulita's husband Glenn is an engineer. I asked him to look at the parking materials. It requires the movement of 60 cars per hour, per lift, in order to meet their parking demand, when you look at their peak demand. And prior to our meeting, there was actually a proposal of only four lifts, and when they came to the meeting, they had seen some of our concerns. They actually had shown two additional lifts being put in. But my point is this, imagine that you've got to accommodate, you've got to move one car from the ground approximately 60 feet in the air in a building a minute to meet the demand, and you can understand why we're concerned about traffic backing up in front of the property when what you have on the ground level is 29 surface parking spaces. That's all you have, and they've gone through their numbers, so someone else needs to look at it with the professional credentials to look at that. From the standpoint of the setback, you don't have to give the requested setback to them on that perspective. Zoning and Review Amendment Criteria, which starts at page 10. Ask, a question B, is the amendment compatible with existing development pattern? I would contend to you that that southern setback is not compatible with the existing property that's owned by my clients, and they have no choice. They are where they are. And the question's been asked. And the question's been asked, why don't they sell? Why didn't they just sell this property? It doesn't matter. It's their property. It's their life, just like each of us have our own life. We spend those things the way that we decide to spend them. And these folks could have done something else over time, but they have stuck with this property because it's where they've always been, it's their childhood home. I don't know about you, mine's in Yosemite, I still go by and take a look at it, it has emotional value to me. The next criteria is, will the amendment adversely affect traffic patterns or congestion? You certainly have to be concerned about that, and before you answer the question, I think you need professional expertise to help you answer the question, and I'm not critical of your staff, it's just the nature of traffic engineering and the special training and expertise that it requires, and you don't have that person on staff to help you with it, to the best of my knowledge, I'll stand corrected if Mr. Walton has a different answer. What effect will the amendment have on the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or the city? That's your criteria, but zoning criteria is effective health, safety, and welfare on people in general, and that's why you have to balance them, and this certainly has a negative impact on the Kundits. And that's just your general zoning criteria. Your PCD criteria go on at page 11, and say, the extent to which the application departs some zoning or subdivision requirements. And just in the setback portion of it, of my letter, I address those things, and the numbers there were actually generated by Daytona Beach staff memorandum. And what you'll see is percentages of reduction, I've got them in the concerns portion of the letter, it is, the front setback Atlantic Avenue, 100% deviation, side setback 99.8% deviation, side setback 99.6% deviation, rear oceanfront 100% deviation, 80% on the south parcel at the side, 90%, 94, 100 on Kundit, 60%, and then 90% on their south side. You have to balance the waivers that you give with the safety of the people involved. Whether they're small and insignificant or not is immaterial under the way that we look at issues that we address. This building can be redesigned to accommodate that. It may not be convenient, it may not be inexpensive, but it is something that is necessary. And I would rather be standing here saying, we've got an agreement, and everybody's happy, and we're going on our way, but that's simply not the case. And I would tell you that to approve what's requested, in my opinion, will be a departure from the essential requirements of law that you are required to follow as you make your zoning decisions. And doing that, it makes a zoning answer circumspect, or rather, perhaps out of key with what the law allows in the first place. You have the discretion, but your discretion has got to be exercised within the bounds of those criteria. I could go on and on, I won't. Those are the central points, I think that you understand why they're concerned, you deal with overflow parking, traffic management plan, adequate side setbacks along A1A, the sidewalk there happens to be 6.9 feet wide, the public sidewalk is 6.9 feet wide. And you've got the buildings coming right up to the edge with the columns and so on. So yes, there's covered space, it's private space. Yes, there's a beach ramp there, it's not being vacated, and they are working with the county to do something there, but effectively, I think you lose public use there. There was loading area and parking spaces, public parking spaces being preserved on the north side, as they began to look at their traffic flow issues, they realized they needed two lanes, and those have been wiped out in their plan. So that you, the public parking that's there, which is about six or eight spaces total, is going to be eliminated, except for perhaps three in front of the Seadunes. And finally, one last thing, regardless of what else is done, when you go back to those pictures where you see the landscaping on their property, and remember, that's the depth of about this, it doesn't show any kind of screening walls on their land, and we don't want one, and whatever else you do, I ask that you make sure that they are not permitted to build any kind of walls or fences along that property line, which would further enclose the Kundits, and make it an even more compact situation. But what I really want you to do is give them a message, they've got to provide adequate setbacks, we think 50 feet is adequate, that's still a very, very substantial waiver, but that would permit the Kundits to not feel totally encroached upon, think of it, if you will, people invading your personal space. I don't care how much you love the person, your husband or your wife, if they stood nose to nose with you for very long, you would do something to either move yourself out of way from them, or to get them away from you, you couldn't take it. We're talking about a permanent nose-to-nose situation, from which my clients will never escape, and I ask you, don't let that happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Was that the end of the public comment?
John's already spoken once, we've heard a lot.
Oh, does he want to go again? Well, I want to stay till, I want to be the last speaker, if that's the protocol, I believe, so if John's got something else to say, I want to make sure he says it, I can answer it.
Oh, it's a different item.
John's already spoken. John's got another item that he can sign off.
He's spoken across the street twice. He lives there.
We've been to this line, we might as well.
Quickly, okay. Two, there's never been parking across the street on the north side, until the place closed and put up the fence, it had always been their backup, they always backed up through there, it had never been public parking. Secondly, this property goes, and goes from end to end, it has no setback on the north side, all they have is a planter there. They have no setback on the south side, there used to be a building there at one time, a hotel, so they never really had a clear view. That hotel was like 10 feet back from the property line, so it's really replacing what had already been there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know we've been here a long time, and I apologize for all the time you guys have had to take on this, but it is a very important project, and obviously, there are a lot of people who have things to say about it. Thankfully, many of them very positive, so I'm thankful for those folks who were here, but I made notes on all the people who had comments or questions, and I want to try to answer them. I think we have a lot of answers, I may have felt rushed, because I took so much time showing you all the video and photographic and other presentation materials tonight, so I may have skipped over some things that I meant to say, I thought I said some things maybe too quickly that some people in the audience didn't hear, so hopefully, I'll have some good answers, some of which repeat things that I thought I said. I'll start by saying, first of all, as is kind of typical, I think, in this situation, you've seen me in before, and other people in this room, we all kind of know each other, and many of us are friends, and Paulida, for instance, I consider a friend, and Glenn, and Jim, and others. I mean, I've been in business 25 years, and have done business with Paulida for 25 years. I respect them as people, they're fellow citizens, they are obviously the most effective people in the community here. And when Jim said, we haven't done anything, I don't think that's accurate, and I'm going to hit a few points to hopefully help you to hopefully agree with me on that point. I want to start with something that might surprise you a little bit, but John Nicholson jarred something in my head that I really meant to say that I don't think I said. And it goes to one of the main points that Jim made. I may have said it, and I didn't say it loud enough, or I didn't say it, either way, we are committed to bringing an operational level, which I said, isn't the kind of thing we normally do in a zoning review, parking, traffic, and vehicular management plan. And I think what Dan did at the end of his comments, and he did give you a lot of comments, and there was a lot to digest there, but hopefully, the visuals that he showed you gave you an impression of all the things that he said, and all of the numbers and things in the various charts and graphs that he showed you. But at the end of the conversation, he said, there are a few points that I can bring to you, and he did, in an outline form, that I think should be incorporated into a management plan. And Jim made that point, and we agree with him. And what I think I said, or I mean to say now if I didn't, is we would be happy with you guys making the production of such a plan that we'd have to live by, whether it be an addendum to the PUD agreement, or however, whatever form it takes, forward, because it's in our interest to make sure this works. I mean, this gets into one of those areas, and when I talk to folks about these kind of questions, we walk into that gray area of whether this is something government should be deciding, or business should be deciding. And in this case, these gentlemen back here, they're not going to build a $120 million hotel and have a bunch of angry customers because they're backed up in the valet parking line. It's not going to happen. They're going to have a plan, but it's their business plan, it's not typically a zoning plan, but this is something that we've only understood to be a concern in the last handful of days. So we're prepared to take the material that Dan brought to you tonight, and turn it into a plan. We'll live by it, it'll become part of our zoning, and we would expect that you make it a condition of your approval tonight that we do that, and we would be happy with that. Like I said, I don't mean to do anything to disrespect Paulida or her brother, who obviously have spent a lot of time here and have a lot of emotional attachment to this Seadunes motel. But some of the things that Paulida said about the yard on the side, or the yard in the front, and how it's going to be affected by what we're doing, I want to bring you back to the pictures, and I don't know what John was saying about the parking garage or something being out of scale, but this is a scaled drawing, I want to start on page 17 of the handouts that I gave you, I'm only going to go back through one or two of these things, just to try to give you a visual that responds to what was said just a few minutes ago. Page 17 there is, kind of gives you the picture of what we're doing to them. I mean, I completely agree with what Jim Moore said. This is a balancing act, and it includes them as one of the things being balanced in this process. When you look at that picture on page, move it back 50 feet, I'm not sure it would make much difference. They are in the middle of a large-scale urban project that's intended to have and deliver 500 new hotel rooms to the community on the beachside. This is a core, like many of the speakers that stood up and said to you, this is a core urban area of our beachside, that's what it is. And I think we've taken a lot of the lessons that were learned in this vicinity, and I've tried to explain, we've tried to make, we've tried to learn from them, make a better project. The streetscape and the hardscape and the pedestrian areas along A1A, and the area along Oak Ridge that Jim was saying we haven't enhanced, I think we're leaps and bounds ahead of anything that's been done on the beachside, ever. And I think what's being done to them, as the way they characterized it, is a blessing. If you'll flip to page 18, you'll sort of see the next level of that from the south a little further. And then, most importantly, take a look at page 21. And Jim was talking about the various views, and I'm sorry, again, when you have so much material, it's hard, sometimes you rush, but look at this for a second. This is the straight shot into the side rear, I'm not sure which one of the, you call, but I guess this is the side. And Paulida talked about the side and the backyard. This is the side yard. Now, the area that you see that's vegetated is our property, that's the 16 feet, so in fact, we're not 16 feet back from their building, we're 16 feet back from their property line, and the area that you see to the left of the landscaping is their property setback. Now, the yard that she spoke of is what you see there. And I'm not trying to criticize their operation or their facility, but I can tell you, this is not a normal beachside motel that has a pool outside, or even sitting areas outside. Take a look at page 20, sorry, page 23. That gives you the backyard view. Now, the landscaping you see, again, is all on our property. The area that's outside of the landscaping is their backyard. It's a place where they park six cars, they stack them in. So that's the backyard, there's not an umbrella with a picnic table, there's nothing. So to the extent that it's being more shady or more sunny, one of the people, one of the members of the redevelopment board said, well, more shady, that should help your air conditioning bill, because everything that's happening at this property is inside, unless you're walking down to the beach, which we're going to make a lot nicer walk for you. So when we're talking about the balance and what we're doing to them, look at the pictures. You don't have to believe me, you don't have to believe the numbers of the charts or the reports, or even your professional staff, look at the pictures, they're realistic, they're real, they're to scale. Jim also mentioned something, you know, and without question, we have taken to heart the things that they've said about traffic, and trying not to block their driveway that you just saw, or do things that are going to affect them. We sure hope there's going to be a lot more traffic around this piece of property than there is right now. There isn't any. And we want a very successful convention hotel to happen here. Are we going to manage the traffic? Absolutely. We not only did the traditional transportation impact analysis that's done with projects, any project you see, of a certain size, but we did a parking analysis, which is part of your packet. We've gone to the extent of doing a circulation analysis, which you saw tonight, and is also part of your packet. I have for you a November 9, 2012 memo from Chris Walsh, from Traffic Engineering Data Solutions, that I'll give to your clerk, that is the independent authority that spoke for the city in reviewing our traffic analysis, it was back in November, so maybe we've forgotten about it since then, but we went through that process, we've been through it, and now we've gone even further. So to say we've done nothing, I think is unfair. I think we've tried to be good neighbors. Can we move the building? Like Jim said, anything can be done, I mean, you can move the mountain to Mohammed if that's the way you want to go, but in this case, what we're telling you as business people, who want to bring this investment and this project to the community, we can't do it without so much pain that it's going to cause the project to not be feasible. That's the message to deliver to you. I think that the areas that you've seen adjacent to their property, I think are a fair way of approaching it. And I think this is an urban setting that they'll continue to be in, when you saw the aerials from the previous hotels that were there, motels that were there, they've been surrounded forever with other motels. I agree that there was a parking lot immediately to the south of them, but there was a motel immediately to the east of them, and immediately to the north of them. And so I don't know that what we're doing to them is quite as bad as it's been made out to be. The other thing I want to mention to you, and I thought I said it, sorry if I didn't, we are committed to and are completely satisfied and willing to volunteer to you, and I, again, thought I said this, that we will produce the equivalent number of parking spaces off-site for our valets to use to offset the 100-space waiver we've asked for. Now, Dan Dantonio stood up here, and he spent a lot of time talking to you about the justification for the waiver, which, if we weren't providing any additional spaces off-site, that would be the end of the conversation. But since we received so much feedback from our neighbors, primarily, and some from a couple of the Main Street Board members, we said, look, we're going to need to find some off-site parking for these peaks. And when we have an event, if the valets can't get everything into their robotic parking garage, they're going to go across the street, like many of the motels and hotels in Daytona Beach, and Ormond Beach, and the shores do already. So I'm here to tell you right now, as part of the record, and hopefully, for a motion that you have to approve this project tonight, that we are happy with it, including a condition that we do that before the hotel can be operated. And I will say the same thing to the city commission when we appear before them. And a nuance to the action that we took in volunteering to bring forward a management plan that we'll operate by, is a comment Jim made about construction vehicles and construction workers, and where they park, same thing. You know, Dan has looked at that, I mean, this is, that's a whole different variation on that theme, but there are a lot more opportunities when construction's going on than there are once the building's built, because there are a lot of other places that are temporary areas to park. We're going to make sure that we have those, and we'll bring forward that as part of our plan. I don't think that kind of an operational plan for a hotel is the type of thing that the planning board wants to get in the business of trying to weigh in on, other than to say, you should have it. So that's what I'm saying to you tonight, we'll have it, and we're happy to have that via a condition of any motion that you make tonight. Jim also mentioned the Oak Ridge improvements, I'm sorry for any mix-up about that, I thought as I was describing the video, and again, some of these things happened tonight quicker than they needed to, but I don't want to keep you guys here till midnight. When we were coming down Oak Ridge, I mentioned, you might remember, that the street's going to get torn up for the utilities, we're replacing old giant sewer and water pipes all the way from the river to the ocean, and down A1A, that are going to service the peninsula for years to come, hopefully, the 50, 60, 70 years, they've been there already in the future. And while we're doing that, we're going to tear the street up. And my hope, as I will remind you, was that we'll resurface the street and reconfigure it so that it'll be more of a calm, retail-oriented gateway like Seabreeze is, going in the other direction, across the other bridge, with parking, for people to park to go to the beach, which they don't have right now. The landscaping that you saw in that area, you might remember I said, is something that was ambitious on our part, and we weren't committed to do ourselves just yet. That put us a little bit over the edge, but I'm telling you right now, we're going to be talking to DOT, we're going to be talking, we have been talking to the county, they're receptive to helping us with that, to try to bring all boats up with the tide in this respect. When we get to A1A, you might remember I said, but everything going on Oak Ridge to the beach, we're going to do all that. So if some of this is ringing true with you, I did hopefully say those things, I may have said them too quickly, but when Jim said that we were trying to mix you up, or misdirect you, I wasn't, and you know me better than that. I think that hit everybody's points, I do want hit everybody's points. I do want to say to our friend, Mr. Gekel at the Regency, we're happy to talk to him. I was going to say the same thing John did about the shade, you know?
Can you address the loading dock, garbage collection, the loopers?
Yeah, if you guys want me to address it here, I will. Otherwise, I'll address it with him. We have lots of answers. Those answers were a large part of the technical review that we went through with Rich and his staff, spent countless hours showing where all the trucks go, where the garbage trucks go. We actually have refrigerated garbage containers, so there's no smell. I mean, there's lots of things I can tell this gentleman. If you want me to do it from here, I will, but it'll take about 20 minutes. Well, I'm going to ask the chairman if that's why he's here.
Were you satisfied with what you heard?
I think it would be beneficial for the two of them to speak, and there may be things beyond code that they could agree would be helpful.
We can do that before the commission meeting.
To the extent that they're not, we will certainly insist that it's handled there.
All right.
Sorry to interrupt you, Rich, but what I was going to say was, we've got plenty of time to talk to them. We're happy to. We're not adverse to them in any way. We appreciate their support of the project, and they are our neighbors immediately. So to the extent that we can talk to them about all these operational aspects, we're happy to. I think we've got plenty of time. I think if you were to specifically condition, much like the redevelopment board did, your approval on us spending some time with them, we're happy to. I think we have answers to a lot of his questions about all of those different delivery questions, garbage questions, et cetera. I didn't want to bore you with all that tonight, but I will if you want me to.
Did the traffic plan, did Laster make the same presentation to the Main Street?
They made the presentation regarding their transportation impact analysis, the general analysis that's done for all projects, and they talked about their parking analysis that justified the waivers, Mr. Chairman. What they didn't do was what was suggested by Mr. Morris, and then after Mr. Morris, some of the folks on the board in terms of the circulation, which when you saw the cars moving in and out and where they go, that's not something that's normally done with any project. But based on the comments of neighbors and the redevelopment board, those things were done since the redevelopment board meeting and now, and that's why it was brought to you tonight. And between now and the City Commission, what I submit to you is that we are willing to turn that into a management plan, a business plan by which we can operate our business with the supervision of the zoning department to the extent that's appropriate.
Okay. Are there any questions? Harry, not bored, I'm ready for your comments.
I do have one question of staff, since we said we'd get back to staff. It may not be read, maybe Rich can do it. With the T1 zoning, it's, just to make sure I'm reading the setbacks and things correctly, they could, if they were building a 55-foot tall building, they could build that with a side yard setback of 15 feet, correct? That's their minimum side yard setback, and it doesn't start increasing until we go over 55 feet, correct?
No, it's 35 feet.
Now, what the code requires, says. When I'm looking at LDC 1010.
Or T1.
Let me see if I can find it here for you.
I believe Jim Morris's letter after the representative's waivers.
No, I know the waivers. I'm saying, if they weren't building this, they could build a 55-foot tall building within 15 feet. That would be the minimum side yard setback. So they could build a five-and-a-half-story tall building. I just want to make sure I'm reading this right.
If it were a T1.
Mm-hmm. Okay, this is what I'm looking at.
It's 35.
35. Note 1, 15 feet, and you started over 55 feet. Is that what it says? Am I reading that right? Minimum side yard, okay. Note 1, note 1, this is note 1, ocean front lot, general requirement.
Then it goes side yard.
So a minimum side-
55 inch mark at 15, then it goes up 1 for 12 feet.
That's, I'm reading that correctly, right?
This doesn't have a note 3. This doesn't have a note 3.
That's rear yard, note 3 is rear yard. I'm looking at side yard. Note 1, side yard setback. Yeah, oh, no, yeah, that's what I, yeah, that's what I wanted to make sure I had.
I can't read that.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure, because they're just showing two stories next to it, but they could build five-and-a-half stories-
55 feet.
15 feet away from it.
Yes.
Instead of two stories, 16 feet away.
For side yard on the T1.
Thank you. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you. That's my only question.
It's your question. Any other comments from the board? Yes, Ms. Charlie?
I was going to say, when you look at page 17, you know, I see some positives there, that if you were to take this building right here and move it over to where it came to the edge, that's when we got a problem.
Oh.
I just thought it sounded melodious that they didn't need.
Okay. Could you say that again, because we couldn't hear you over here?
You could not.
Now we can.
Now, I was saying that if you were to take this building right here and move it over to the edge, I think that's a valid, I think that's a valid problem when that's done. But I think by having these two flat areas before that, you've opened it up and made it much easier. And also, did you notice the building behind is recessed, is back towards the east, and it actually opens up that area in there. So it is, actually, I think it's a valid point. Actually, I think that's well-designed in there to give some more space to the little motel in here. Anyway.
That's, yeah, that's what I was asking. What, they could, they could have built something-
Five stories high.
Right next to it.
Right next door.
Much taller. I did have some comments, but I'll wait.
No, go ahead.
Okay. I really struggled a lot. I was on the redevelopment board when this first came forward as a concept plan and have spent a lot of time thinking about it, and thinking in particular, of course, my notes, comments were in the minutes about the waivers that they're requesting, that Mr. Morris made sure to say that there needs to be a reasoned account of them. You know, we're talking about basically minimalist landscaping. We're talking about intrusion beyond the bulkhead line. We're talking about providing 83% of the required parking, a waiver for that. We're talking about, in terms of design, that the only color is white and more white. You know, we require multiple colors. We're talking about hard lines that are emphasized rather than softened as our code requires. The developer is not dedicating a single foot of public right-of-way, which we require. They're relying on the Oak Ridge ramp that is already there. They're certainly enhancing it, but that's what they're relying on. And as for setbacks, I actually added it up. It's a reduction of 92% of what would be required for these buildings. We would be, they would need 782 and 1/2 feet of setbacks. I think their lot's only 440 feet wide, so they'd need another lot and 1/2. It is really, really, really obvious that this project was not made for our code. But I think that this project was made beautifully for our city. I think the Leisich family, whose vision this is, are aptly named. Your company Proto Group, Proto from the Greek, meaning original. This is certainly an original project. And since the original concept was presented at the board meeting that I was at in September, Rob really speaks to the fact, they have made a lot of changes. They have incorporated a lot of what the board members, not just me, but the other board members said. I think that what Rob offered tonight for them, the inclusion of a traffic management plan, the commitment to off-site parking, the other conversation with the Regency, which I think will answer a lot of their questions, you know, it works. It works on this location. And they're members of this board, I mean, that we sat through a few years of oceanfront standards with many people here, and, you know, we said that there were certain things we wanted, view, saw huge setbacks, all of this. And while this project doesn't meet those criteria, I think it meets the spirit of them. I think it meets the intent. When you look at the architecture, the main element in this architecture is light. I mean, it's light. It's innovative. Looking at the robotic parking, a robotic garage needs less than 50% of what a standard concrete ramp garage needs. Forget emission controls, just the land alone, but then you get into the fact that you're not putting tire and brake stuff into the air, those emissions, which are much more toxic than anything that comes out of the gas, you know, the muffler pipe or whatever in the back. I think this is innovative, like Bob just pointed out, and what they have done in the step-back design for their neighbor, considering what could be here. And I think that it's a breath of fresh air. I mean, it just feels fresh. The one thing that I would say to all of the business people who got up and spoke about the core foundation being so critically important, don't ever forget that the neighborhoods are part of your core foundation. And if you don't have a place that people want to walk through to get to your business, your business is going to suffer. And it is important to remember what the neighborhood renovation that is happening, the historic designation, the increase, the work to increase home ownership to get away from the transient living nature of this community, that's all going to help this as well. It's a, what do you call it, interdependent relationship. Good neighborhoods are also good business. But I never thought I would have said this last September when I first saw this in front of me, that I would ever come to this. But they have worked so hard to make this work. And I just hope that the board does it, that they grant their waivers, that they make a recommendation to the commission to go forward with the two caveats that Mr. Merrill added about the inclusion of the traffic managed plan and the commitment to off-site parking. But I just think this is an amazing project.
Any other comments?
I surprised you, didn't I?
I about fell over on that one, Tracy. I would like to agree with Tracy. But we need the project. Sometimes you've got to step outside the box a little bit. If you stay inside the box, you know, we get boxed in like that we have been for so many years with no new projects or anything. So this is good for the convention center. We need it. We need the hotel rooms, because now we have the space. We need the employees. We need the tax base. We need a nice new building, and I'm all for it.
Good. You mentioned something that I thought was important, too. And I think the Main Street Redevelopment Board did an excellent job in covering this plan, and obviously, it was taken to heart, and a lot of work has been done since that time. So I'm very pleased to hear that, and I want to give them recognition, too. And I agree with you. Yes, I think the two caveats that was listed as far as 100 parking spaces off-site and also the traffic, concrete plan presented to City Commission needs to be in that. Mr. Mcginnis?
Mr. Chairman, my only additional comment, although I'm disappointed that we haven't gotten better setbacks for the individual property owner. I wish we could have done more about that. But as part of the traffic management plan, I'm concerned about the access to their driveway, because their driveway sits along the waiting path for the hotel's valets. So if that would be part of the traffic management plan, that their driveway would be specifically addressed. Because in that, the video that showed the moving cars, there were always cars backed up in front of the Sea Dunes.
John, you raised a good point.
I'm envisioning people coming to the Sea Dunes, and they would be caught in the traffic on A1A, unable to make a turn.
I'm in agreement with you, and I want to say for the record, that's why I got up to respond to say, we would absolutely need to include that. That becomes an operational thing, I think, because you can't design around that. And the reason why, and I'm not going to go back through all the pictures again, but if you can remember, you know, they've got a place where they stack those cars in behind this little motel, and it's not a conventional parking area. It's not a conventional driveway.
Well, that's why I'm concerned that they have access as they have now.
Precisely. Its location, as it relates to the other things that are happening from a transportation standpoint in that area, is unconventional. So we need to work around them. And part of, when we talked about that, we sat with them, part of it might be, the valets need to know if somebody's going to be coming out, and how often do those people, are they coming in and out? If they're going to be coming out where it's really at a peak time like that, there needs to be a way that they can signal the valet and say, hold them up for a couple seconds while this guy backs out. That's what it comes down to. It's not that complicated. So, but there needs to be a policy that says they will do that, and we're willing to. So, to answer your question.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I think this is really, really great. When I first saw this project and started digging through it, I was really excited. You know, that we have investors that are willing to come to this town and invest that amount of money in our community is, that's incredible, especially in a time when the economy is hurting as it is. And there's so many areas out there in the U.S. that would love to have investment dollars like that just saturate their community. This is a wonderful opportunity. And so first of all, thanks. And I'm excited to see the progress and the growth and the change in that area. And again, looking at the diagrams, looking at the video, first of all, I also want to apologize for the coughing disruption I did earlier. It's allergic reaction I get when hunting season's over. But I am really excited about this. I'm a board, I'm pumped about it, and I also would encourage the Board to really look at this as the next stepping stone to get this community really moving in the right direction, because this is very attractive, very attractive.
Well said.
Yeah, I echo Matt. You know, Alexi and Simon and Peter Leisich walked in my office in July of 2011. I had peace lands for sale further north, didn't really work for them. But they sat in our conference room with the five guys I work with and showed us their hotels in St. Petersburg and what they wanted to build here. You know, some of you know, Ed Shores worked with me. We were there on a Friday afternoon, listening to them talk to us. And when they left, Ed and I looked at each other and said, that's never happening in Daytona, as much as I wanted that. And we worked with them, tried to help them what we can, and, you know, know the brokerage had found a selling something, but I can't believe a year and a half later, we're sitting here having this conversation in this venue. It's pretty unbelievable. You know, I listened to a lot of stuff with, you know, drunk blind care Mr. Davis, Bob Davis. He said, we're never going to build any more big hotels. You know, when Brango let us be one under, we had all these big oceanfront sites, which, my company's old townhome, I'm very familiar with the whole thing. And, you know, Bob Davis said, we're never going to build any more 400 or 500 mile room hotels in this town. They're all going to be 100 units. You know, that's the Daytona model, it's worked for years, we're never going to do this again. And everybody kind of said, oh, okay, we're designed to that fact. So, and we have two now. You know, after this one, there's another group out there wanting to build a big one. So, you know, I can certainly, you know, understand and come to this position. You know, it's a bad deal. You know, it's a lot like the Marina over there. You know, those people that live in, view the Marina, don't own those air rights over the water. over the water. And it's, I hate it. But it is kind of what we're dealt here. Like Tracy mentioned, the T1 zoning, you know, without a zoning change, just in T1, they can go fifty feet tall before they have to take that additional one foot setback or two feet of height, or two to one, whatever the ratio is. I, I just don't, you know, certainly for this volunteer-led board, certainly we need to hand it up to the commission with some caveats and. I'm all for the traffic study too. You know, Dan, Dan Tony's a personal friend of mine, but I totally agree that we need independent study. Because I plan to go over to this hotel for some various function around the holidays or some charitable organization that we all attend. I don't want to stand there for thirty minutes waiting on my car afterward. So, those are my thoughts.
Make a motion, we approve, was there any more discussion?
I think that's it.
Make a motion, we approve planned commercial development rezoning Daytona Beach Convention Hotel and Condominium PCD, Development 2012-110, with parking off-site provided and traffic management plan provided before the City Commission.
Second. Parking off-site, not provided, but the commitment to plan, okay.
The plan.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Very not at passes. Thank you so much.
Yeah. Larry.
Thank you.
Can we just have like five minutes to get off our foot?
I hear you. We'll take a five-minute break. Yeah.
Jeff, would you consider?
Jeff Hurd?
No.
All you gotta do is, Jeff, you should do this.
You could do that.
Tracy?
No. No, I scare people.
Well, you do already, why?
Yeah, what's the difference?
It's less scary, I think, for them from over here.
You'll scare them both ways.
Oh, I think it's less scary.
You sure?
Go ahead and be the chair. Come on, somebody, somebody got to step up.
Okay, everyone else is saying no, we're running out of people. Okay.
I'm only saying no for right now.
Okay.
But I do highly recommend that we do select Ms. Remar.
Well, how about Mr. Neal, you be vice chair?
All right.
Okay.
Hey, I think we've killed two birds with one stone, can't we?
And Ms. Washington will remain the secretary?
Sure. Okay, good.
We got a three-way deal.
Do we have to vote? Do we have to vote?
Yeah, we should probably do a motion and, I think we could probably just do it as one. It sounds like we have some consensus.
I make a motion, we approve Tracy Remar as chairman, and Mr. Neal as vice chairman, and Ms. Washington as secretary.
Right.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have just elected a new board. Of those three positions. We're ready for other business?
Tony's lucky we didn't stick him in there.
I know.
His first say no.
If I'm, if I'm chair, is someone else going to take over doing the candy, or do I still? I'll do, okay, I'll do the candy.
I think that still comes with the chair.
Okay, all right.
I really feel bad about, Tony was part of our obligation.
John's over here going multitask.
We hear from Downtown Blue Road Redevelopment, Ms. Washington.
Yes. The Downtown Blue Road Redevelopment Board met January eighth. That was Tuesday at twelve noon. We had the approval of minutes, which is the norm. One item for, for us to vote on, and that was conditional use for the filling station, which is located at the southeast corner of Orange and Palmetto avenues. That's.
On the corner.
Over here on the corner. Yeah.
Wait, what'd you do for the filling station there?
They wanted conditional use, and what they wanted to do, they wanted a permit to serve alcohol inside. And outside, they would have eating area.
At the British Motors?
No, not British, at the southeast corner. The southeast corner. That was the same thing I thought when, when we got the packet. But the southeast corner. There were a number of questions regarding that. One of them was parking. As you all know, there's very little parking in that area, period. And they said they would have six full-time employees, and the question was, where are they going to park? Not to mention, they're planning on two hundred, they would, it would be two hundred seats. So, oh God, it, it was a long session. It ended up being, we had to vote to have an additional session, which we had Tuesday of this week. We went through it because there were problems with the closeness of the businesses this way. That, one of the huge problems was, after the parking piece, was where would the garbage be set? When you brought the garbage out? There was an explanation that garbage could be brought out through the, there's a small alleyway. Individuals were saying that wasn't going to work. And what it looks like it's going to be is, the garbage is going to be set on Orange Avenue. And I know that's something they're still going to have to work with. Because unless the garbage people change, they're not going in an alley to pick up the garbage, to bring out. Another item that was a question on that was, there's an, a rooming house apartment right next to it, and the way, the, the extension of the outside eatery is going, there would be a problem because the backside of the place is already, has a fence already. How in the world should there be a fire or something? Is the fire department going to get there? I'm sure they're going to work it out, but it was approved after two meetings. Yeah, it was finally approved.
Just in case it comes up again, the Seabreeze.
Seabreeze, there's an alleyway and the garbage people go behind them all the time.
They do?
Yeah. The garbage goes right down the alley. No, there's no garbage can that goes anywhere on the front of Seabreeze. There's an alley, and they pick up, they go straight down the alley, and it goes the length of Seabreeze. So, it just, you know.
This was, this was one of the pieces that was brought up.
Yeah.
And they said that if they placed it there, it would be, it would be picked up. We shall see. Because the businesses on this side questioned it. Because they think with a restaurant that size, that there's going to be a problem. One of the other things they asked be explained to them was, what made this a standout? Because you've got other eateries in the area. The menu they presented was basically everything there was Florida. The meat, the beef, the, they said the wine would be Florida wine. It's going to be. It's left to be seen, but anyway. They would have everything that, Florida gator ribs, everything was going to be Florida, so they were pushing that. But it was passed.
Where again, is this location?
Right here. Right, up, right, right across Palmetto.
The old, that's in Nashville?
It's, it was an old, old gas station, and it doesn't face Palmetto. It literally faces Orange Avenue.
Oh, okay.
And it's right next.
I'm a little confused, how can you have something that has two hundred people with no parking?
Robotic seating block.
They're going to work with the city to see if they can get some of the parking here.
Oh, you're going to have the city.
Uh-huh.
But then the bar can do that too, that's next door, and the bar was.
I don't know.
To the city lot?
But the city will be working on that.
Wow.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully the city will charge like Wachovia Bank charges the bars on Seabreeze.
Really?
Mostly going to be city employees anyway, so they just don't have to move the car.
They're wanting their gator tail, huh?
And there was one other discussion at that meeting, and that was on design, design standards for the Downtown Blue Road area. And it's an ongoing discussion. I don't see it ending anytime soon. And that was it. That covers both meetings, both the one on the eighth and the one on the twenty-second.
All right. We won't have, Ms. Benjamin's not here, so there won't be a Midtown Redevelopment meeting. For Main Street, South Atlantic, our new member, Mr. Goan, attended the meeting. He's not legally a member of it yet.
Right, even though I was appointed by the planning board, it was on the agenda for the City Commission, but they had tied it into another appointment that evidently they weren't concrete on. And therefore, they pulled, because they pulled that agenda, I was tagged to it. So I couldn't participate in the meeting.
But you did go.
So, I was there, basically, in a nutshell, what we discussed tonight, that's what we discussed.
That was a nice report.
Yeah.
We have for public comments, Mr. Nicholson. Did you want to keep your notes on the back here?
No, I had to give you another note for the last one. John Nicholson, 413 North Henry Avenue. It's been three months. John, this emerged land, I would ask you to talk about it. It came back and bit us in the butt once, I don't want it to do it another time. We don't have that many properties on the river. We never knew this was a property on the river, so we don't know what's going to come down the pike. Secondly, floor area ratio. We've been wanting to talk about that for the last seven years, haven't gotten to it yet. And lastly, about landscaping. What's required of landscaping, if you, whenever we require all this garbage that they do, within a year, all those little plants are all gone. So I think we need to find a new way of, of doing landscaping. Again, and isn't it nice to be almost ten o'clock? We haven't done that in a long time.
Been a while, hasn't it?
Yep.
Thank you. Staff comments?
The only item I had is the administration asked us, and I know we recommended Matt be the representative for the Main Street, but they asked to reconfirm, or maybe the City Commission has to reconfirm on a more regular basis for Midtown and Downtown. I'm not suggesting we make a change, it'd be good for the record to reaffirm if Ms. Washington wants to continue and Ms. Benjamin, that we tell administration that, and they do whatever they have to do. But they were asking, was it today?
Like yearly?
Today again. It may need to be done yearly where they confirm it. So I would suggest this for the record. Just recommend those two to remain, and we'll, we'll pass that on, and then that may need to go to the commission to. I, I know you, you stay on until replaced anyway, so it's not like you wouldn't continue, but they were asking to get them that information, so.
Well, then I, I move that we have Ms. Benjamin and Ms. Washington continue as the planning board liaisons respectively to Midtown and Downtown Redevelopment Boards.
Saying all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So done.
That's all that I had, we have had plenty tonight, so.
Board member comments? Yeah.
Actually, I think we owe you a lot of thanks for your two years of serving as, as the chairman. It's always difficult, and I have to compliment you and thank you for your work during that period of time. And I know I'm speaking for all of us when I say that.
Well, thank you. And I, I just wanted to say, I wanted to thank all of you, the board members and the staff, for the past two years. I certainly have enjoyed it. And I'm very proud to be serving with all of you. I think we take our responsibilities seriously, both to our citizens and, and to the businesses of our community, and seeing it grow. And what a wonderful thing was happening tonight. Thank you all so much.
I want to say one thing.
Yes.
This is the first meeting on a night that we've had that we've made all this time on one project. And I saw that palm tree farm between the buildings. And there was not a comment made. By our friend Bobo.
That's because they weren't cabbage palms.
They weren't cabbage, okay.
They're talking about a different kind of palm.
Everybody knows it now.
Yes, it's cabbage palms.
So they don't bring the cabbage palms.
Hearing no more, meeting a jerk.